I am going to, since I find all my paperwork, call this meeting to order. All right. I'm going to call to order the City of San Carlos City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting for September 25th, 7:00 p.m. We have no Assembly Bill 2449 teleconference request, so if you'll please join me and stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I love having a full house.
If only for a short while.
If only for a short while is true, but I encourage you all to stay. We have some interesting things to discuss today. So first of all, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any requests from council? Okay. So we have a few presentations, and if you're able to stay for through the presentations, and we public comment, we do the consent calendar. It shouldn't be too long. If you need to leave, we totally understand, but if you could at least stay for the first couple of presentations would be great, so it's less disruptive for the meeting. So the first one is, I'm going to call up Cory Carpenter. All right, and I should have announced this item, that we're presenting Cory with a city coin. So, all right. And Cory still talks to me even though I was on school board and she was working at the school district, so that's a good sign that we like each other.
We're still friends.
We're still friends. When I started to do the city coin this year as mayor, I was wondering, like, am I going to have enough volunteers? Are there going to be enough people to do? And I will say, we are so blessed in this community to have so many wonderful volunteers, so I'm honored to recognize Cory for all her great support and volunteering in the community. And this just, I've heard from someone who we gave a coin to earlier, and they said, afterwards, everyone calls you, so it's going to get worse.
Oh, no.
So be prepared. So I'm just going to read off a few things that Cory has been working on and still works on, and then give her a few minutes to say a few words. So first, she has been PTA president four times. Apparently, you don't know how to say no. Twice at Arondo, once at Central, and once at TL. She's been involved with AYSO Soccer, the San Carlos Children's Theater as board member and president. She's worked for, volunteered for the San Carlos Youth Center Foundation, for the Ed Foundation, Healthy Cities, the San Carlos Wine Walk, San Carlos Art and Wine Festival, so I'm sure you'll see Cory in a pretty soon, a couple of weeks there at that as well. What are you volunteering for at the Wine Festival?
Actually, it's really embarrassing. I'm not a town.
Oh, my gosh. All right. We didn't communicate that one ahead of time. All right. That's sort of your prize, that's your prize for getting the coins. You get to take a weekend off. And she's currently very active with the San Carlos Park and Rec Foundation and the San Carlos Lions, so I'm sure you see Cory all around town, all the time. So I am honored on behalf of the city to present her with a city coin, to thank her for all her volunteering and her work and her dedication to our community. And the floor is yours. Come around this way.
Come around this way.
Because we have you, you're on camera, so you'll...
Well, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Rack. And I've known you for quite a while in a lot of different capacities, so thank you. Thank you to the city council. I'm going to be very short and sweet here. I see all my Park and Rec Foundation buddies here in the audience, so thank you for being here. San Carlos is a great place. We have so many amazing volunteers, and I'm so pleased to be one of them, and I've made so many great friends here, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Cory. And does any of my colleagues have any comments? Okay, how about, do we have any public comment for this item?
I do not have any speaker slips and no hands up for listeners.
All right. Well, congratulations again, Cory, and thank you for all you do for our city. Next item is, presentation is item 5B, which is present city coins, and I apologize, I may get some of these names wrong. James Reggiano, Cupio Onga, Olga Gerard, Karthik Suresh, and Estelle Rivaria in recognition of their heroic actions on September 17th, 2023 at Highlands Park. So I'm gonna, if they can come on up. All right. Oh, come around the other side, so you can, everyone can see you. Stand over, if you stand over here. We'll do it this way. All right. I'm gonna just read this. So, "On Sunday, September 17th, in the late afternoon while at Highlands Park, tennis and pickleball courts, San Carlos resident Debbie Geddicky went into cardiac arrest. And as a group of people surrounded her, Estelle, who witnessed the emergency, got Reggie's attention, who was a few courts away, and let him know that Debbie, one of his pickleball students, was in cardiac arrest. So Reggie ran to her side, directed Olga to call 911. Olga stayed on the call with the 911 operator and talked about, through providing care for her, after Reggie determined she was not breathing and didn't have a pulse, he began CPR. After several minutes of performing CPR, Cupio, is that pronounced that right?
Queepo.
Queepo. All right. Thank you. Took over and continued CPR on Debbie. Karthik assisted by flagging down and directing emergency vehicles to where they needed to go. AMR was nearby and quick to respond to the scene. Estelle was able to access Debbie's phone to notify her daughter and son of the emergency and keep them informed of all that was going on. Mark and Kristen are here with us tonight. They're on the phone. Oh, okay. They are, thank you. Nope, they're Debbie's children. Now, I lost my place here. Sorry about that. Without these amazing and brave San Carlos community members, this emergency could have ended differently. Debbie is on the road to recovery and hopes to be released from the hospital as early as tomorrow. So on behalf of the San Carlos City Council, I commend the heroic actions taken by these five community members last Sunday, and would like to present all of you with a city coin. So Jim, Cupio, Olga, Karthik, and Estelle, and Jim is known as Reggie. So if you, give me one second. On behalf of the city, really thank you for springing into action and you just show how much we, in San Carlos, work to help each other out at all times, and really were honored and really thank you for what you did. Does anyone, do you want to say a few words? You don't have to, no pressure. If you'd like to, you're welcome to say a few... Yep. Yep. Come on up. We have, for public comment, we have Mark Geddicky and Kristen Geddicky.
Thank you.
You guys can stay there, sit down, whatever you like.
Oh, you guys standing there is going to make this harder. All right. I know. So, hi, everybody. My name is Mark Geddicky, and this is my sister Kristen Geddicky. We appreciate the council giving us the time to read aloud a letter, oh my goodness, a letter written by my, her mom. She's a San Carlos resident for over 43 years, and really just wanted to honor the five people here today. So in the words of our mom, "Dear Mayor Rack and City Council members, I am Debbie Geddicky, and I suffered cardiac arrest on the Highlands Park pickleball courts on Sunday, September 17th. I am unable to attend this meeting in person due to my ongoing recovery in the hospital, but I'm glad my son and daughter are able to be here to represent me. I feel incredibly fortunate to be alive and to have an opportunity to express my heartfelt gratitude to Reggie, Queepo, Estelle, Olga, and Karthik. It has been a whirlwind of a week, and every day I've learned new details about how these five people helped me survive and set me up for a miraculous path for recovery."
The condition that occurred within my heart could have happened anywhere, and I'm thankful for the series of events that led to all of us being there on the same courts, where they could take swift actions that they did to save my life. Their help, along with first responders and the Sequoia Hospital medical team, has given me the gift of continued time with my family and friends, as well as more games on the court with this great local pickleball community I've become a part of. Sorry, it's emotional. I can't wait until I can hug each one of them and express my gratitude for saving my life. Until then, I thank them from the bottom of my heart, and I look forward to be out on the pickleball courts with them again soon. Thank you, Debbie Geddicky."
So on a, hopefully if we can just have one more minute, just on a personal note, from both me and my sister, our mom is one of our heroes. She's a strong, independent, hardworking mother. She raised us into who we are today. We love her deeply, and we cherish all the time that we get with her, and you're now all heroes for her, and by extension, you're heroes for us.
You all have shown incredible empathy, concern, and humility in the short week since we personally had a chance to meet you. We will forever be grateful for what you've done for our family.
So, thank you so much, and just to the room and everyone, if you can take one thing away from this, just please consider taking a CBR course. It may not be needed to save the life of someone in your family, but it might save the life and, you know, someone else's. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for everyone being here, and thank you for what you did, and you honor us with your presence today. Are there any, do my colleagues have any comments? I think, Ron, did you have your...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was out of the country when the incident happened, and I want to say that this is one of the few times when I've been out of the country or out of the state where something good has happened. So I'm really glad that this is a great story, because Jeff knows that a few other times I wasn't here, we had some real things that we had to deal with, but I'm really glad this is a great story, and congratulations to all of you. You're all heroes to all of us. Thank you.
And do we have any other public comment on this item, Crystal?
Yes, we do. From Dion Tippel. Yeah, if you can approach the podium.
Thank you, council, for having me tonight. It's kind of hard to follow up with that, and I'm so thankful for your mom. I've been wanting to speak up to get defibrillators at our parks. Burton Park has concerts with 1,000 people. We have all of our kids at the basketball courts. We have the tennis courts, the baseball courts with all those little kids, and cardiac arrest not only happens, we always think it's with older people, but it could be with our children. As we know, with some sports, young kids that have passed, a lot of times CPR does not help with cardiac arrest, is what I've learned. I lost Carlos at age 58, and so that's why I just feel so strongly to get these defibrillators out there. I know we say we have them in the youth center and in the Kinos building, but there's no markers anywhere that says they're in there, and what do we do when the door's locked and the kids are out there, you know, at the park at 6:00 a.m. with their parents, or, you know, 10:00 at night on the field? So, Woodside High School, I know I've been talking with Sequoia Health, and they have contributed, or donated the defibrillators out on the Woodside football fields. I've seen them, I've sent pictures to Parks and Rec over a year ago of freestanding ones, and I just feel very strongly that we need to have them visible, we need to have signs out, and it can save a life. Again, CPR cannot usually, we're very blessed that that worked for your mom. Usually, it does not help with cardiac arrest. It can help with heart attacks, but as Reggie said, maybe only 10% for cardiac arrest. So I would really like to see them out there in whatever I can do. I had been a member of Rotary, and I know we can raise some funds, but I'm not sure that's the issue, because I don't think they're that much. So anyway, let's get them out there and save some more lives, because there's going to be more that's happening, because I played that pickleball, and it's tough. So just really trying to lead the way, and this might be a good standing to get that on, get it moving. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff, is that something we can look into?
Yeah, I believe we already are looking into that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item, Crystal?
No, there are none.
Okay. Great. So we're now going to receive a couple of updates. If you would like to stay, you're welcome, or you can pause if you do need to head out for a second. While people are heading out, we're going to move on to item 5C, which is receive updates from Silicon Valley Clean Water on their operations. Okay. Stephen Machida.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. I have the honor and privilege to introduce Teresa Herrera, the manager for Silicon Valley Clean Water, and she's, will actually give you an update on their efforts on the regional environmental sewer convenience upgrades. So with that, I'll introduce Teresa.
Mayor Rack and City Councilmembers, thank you for inviting me here. I'm always thrilled to tell our story about Silicon Valley Clean Water, so I'll just go ahead. Several topics today, as Steve mentioned, the rescue project, which is our conveyance system upgrades, and a couple of upcoming programs of work that we have on the docket, nutrients removal and potable reuse, which I'll go into in a little bit more detail. On our wastewater conveyance system, we call it the Regional Environmental Sewer Conveyance Upgrades, or Rescue, and it's three major projects that have been going on since 20, actually, since 2014. Our gravity pipeline, our front of plant project, and our pump stations improvements. And going through each one, our gravity pipeline is that bright green line that connects the two red dots. Our front of plant facility is at our wastewater treatment plant at the end of Redwood Shore's Parkway, and our pump station improvements are four pump stations, which I'll describe in a little bit. But starting with our gravity pipeline, it's complete, and we're really, really thrilled about it. It's been a very long project. It's been in construction since 2017, and we're just thrilled that it's actually in operation. It's currently taken flow from Redwood City and West Bay Sanitary District, which is primarily Menlo Park, plus some of the other surrounding areas down south. And, does this have a pointer? Or is there, okay. So what's happening is, an operator is standing at the top of our bypass structure, and he's opening a valve which allows water to come through the pressure pipe, which is coming kind of out of the picture towards us, and the water will go up through this steel structure and into that white structure behind it, which is our drop structure. And then to the left of Monty Hamamoto, which is our chief operating officer, there's another valve that's closed, so that forces the water up and through the bypass. We anticipate San Carlos flow entering the gravity pipeline about November, possibly October. Our front of plant project has begun their 30-day acceptance test as of September 7th, so about two and a half weeks, we've been operating that facility, and its preliminary treatment, which is screening and grit removal from all the wastewater that we get to the treatment plant. And all the facilities that you see in the foreground of this picture, the two cylindrical tanks and all the ducting out there, that's all odor control to ensure that our residents nearby don't detect any of the odors coming into our treatment plant. So we're pretty thrilled about that, having been started up about two and a half weeks ago. And finally, our pump station improvements project. As I noted, Menlo Park Pump Station to the south, coming northwards, Redwood City Pump Station, we have a San Carlos Pump Station, which is just adjacent to the airport, and then Belmont Pump Station. And specific to San Carlos, which is the rescue element related to that pump station, we are installing a drop structure which will take all the flow from San Carlos and put it into the gravity pipe. At the end of that work, we'll decommission the pump station. And the next picture has just a close-up of the, an aerial view of the pump station proper. So at the bottom is San Carlos Sewer, which your Public Works Department operates. We take the flow from that point and bring it in. Currently, it's pumped from the pump station, but as I noted, in October, November, it'll enter the drop structure and then into the gravity pipeline. So that'll be a big event for the rescue program, and as I noted again, October, November, so within a month or so, we'll be receiving San Carlos flow in that way. So moving on to other treatment plant work that's currently ongoing, three large projects are in progress. Our fixed film reactors and our final effluent pumping are rehabilitating and replacing original construction, which was in the late 70s, so we're thrilled about getting those two facilities replaced and rehabilitated. Those will, those will be the last facilities, processes in our treatment plant that have not been touched yet as a result of our capital improvement program. And our digestive rehabilitation, we have two that we're redoing from 2011, 2013 projects. So if you can imagine the Golden Gate Bridge, you know, you finish painting it, you start again at the front, so that's kind of some, where we're entering into treatment plant work after those two large projects are complete. So I noted future programs of work, two large endeavors. One is nutrient removal, and one is advanced water purification for potable reuse, and those will both be included in our CIP update that we'll bring to the commission in November. And I'll just talk a little bit about both of those. So as you may or may not know, wastewater has very high levels of nitrogen in it, primarily in the form of ammonia, and nitrogen could negatively impact receiving waters, which in this case is San Francisco Bay. And in 2022, as well as this past summer, there's been recent algal blooms that you've probably read about and heard about in the bay. And so as a response to that, the Water Quality Board is putting limits on nitrogen for all the treatment plants around the San Francisco Bay, which will require a new treatment system for our treatment plant, because it was not built to remove nitrogen. It had never been a problem before now. And what we are planning on doing is phasing the nitrogen treatment system, starting with side stream, side stream, which takes a small portion of our highly concentrated filtrate that has high levels of nitrogen, will treat that, and then slowly work towards a full-scale nitrogen removal project. The regional board's anticipating providing a 10-year horizon for treatment lands to comply with the limits that they're going to put in place. On the advanced water purification front, we've been working with water agencies in City of San Mateo for over 10 years on a advanced water purification program. So the two wastewater agencies that will provide water is Silicon Valley Clean Water as well as City of San Mateo, and the water agencies are as listed there, the largest one being San Francisco PUC, who owns and operates the Hetch Hetchy system. So what this conglomerate, this conglomeration of agencies is working towards is a potable reuse project, and there's two methods of providing water. One is called indirect potable reuse, in which case we would deliver water to the Crystal Springs Reservoir, and then it would flow through the reservoir, through the Harry S. Tracy Plant, and then out into the distribution system. Direct potable reuse is, we deliver water right into the water distribution pipelines. And the State Water Resources Control Board are, have been working on regulations, limits, pollutants for nine on 10 years, and we expect those regulations out before the end of this year. So the water and wastewater community is really excited about seeing those regulations and working towards that. Some near-term activities, as I noted, will be bringing our CIP update to our commission in probably November, and then every year, we put out a long-range finance plan, first quarter of next year, likely in January. So with that, thank you. I really appreciate being invited here to speak with you all, and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I have a question about the potable water reuse. And is that being done because we're running out of potable water and drought conditions? And I don't know if you can kind of describe the background to that thinking?
Yeah, absolutely. And the fact that SFPUC is participating in this is a big deal, because 10 years ago, when we started, you know, trying to get cooperation with this, they were like, no, no, no. But as you know, we've had a lot of drought years this past 10, 15 years, and so they recognize it as part of their water system, they need to use advanced water, purified water. So yeah, it's a direct result from drought that we're encountering and will continue to encounter.
Councilmember Collins, and then Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming tonight, Teresa, and speaking with us. I understand that a lot of the water, or nearly all of the water that is treated, that goes out in the bay, is not that far from being potable. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I know you told us at one point, but I think it bears repeating, about how many gallons of treated water ends up in the bay every day?
Every day, we, well, in summer months, we send about 10 million gallons of water a day to the bay, which is a waste.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of water. It's a lot of water. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Can you just explain a little bit about the nitrogen and how it's cleaned, I guess?
It's, so it's a relatively new treatment technology. It has, it has been around for about 10 years. It's limited in how it's done, I shouldn't say that. It's limited in how many treatment technologies are out there and how many manufacturers make the processes that do it. It's, it's a, so there's, there's two methods. One is called anamox, one is called ananidimox, and it's, it's a, it's a biological process, so a series of membranes upon which bacteria grow that are specialized for nitrogen removal or conversion of nitrogen to other forms. So it's, as I said, it's a relatively new technology, and it'll take a lot of training and, you know, for our operations staff to become familiar with it, but it's, it has been proven. In the United States, there's about 10 installations thus far. There's a few more, and there's a lot more in Europe, but in the United States, it's about 10.
All right. Vice Mayor Dugan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Teresa. Appreciate the overview and all the progress on many significant capital projects. As the new pipeline came online and this new plant, I guess you're going through the acceptance test now. Have there been any surprises or material issues as these new systems have come on board? Or is there, you know, I know there's always some kinks, but has there been anything disruptive or potentially costly to your ratepayers through this?
For the water flowing through there, everything's going fantastically. Where we are seeing some hiccups is in our odor control system, and that's why I pointed it out on the foreground. It's a very large system. So we are, I wasn't going to say this, but yesterday, unfortunately, and Commissioner Collins, Councilmember Collins is aware of this, but yesterday, we had a catastrophic mechanical failure on one of the odor control fans. And so we're doing forensics on it now to understand what happened. We think it's a manufacturing defect on the impeller, on the fan blades, but we're not sure yet. So that was a big surprise.
That's part of this new plant? That's still being accepted?
Yes.
So still under warranty, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay.
And yeah, the odor control subcontractors out today, they came out immediately. The manufacturer's coming out tomorrow morning. So it's not on our dime, you know, thankfully.
Okay. Great, thank you. Glad to hear that.
All right. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Very much.
Oh, actually, let me see if there's any public comment.
Yes, looks like we do have one hand up.
Okay.
From Zoom.
You can sit down if you want.
Debbie Baldacci, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Council. I just had a question about the potable water and the water supply in general. San Carlos will have approximately 3.5 million square feet of life science, and Redwood Shores will have even more. The water usage for these developments is huge. They have vivariums. They will have bio labs where people are washing their hands a lot. And there are pathogens that will necessarily be in the water. So it is concerning to hear that the water will somehow be cleaned and put back into our drinking supply rather than put out into the ocean. So would it be possible for the speaker to address the strain on the system through all the new water that will be put through the system from this development, and how they will be sure that water will not have deadly pathogens in it that could become part of our drinking water supply? Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I think what I'd like to, I think that could be a pretty long answer. So, and we have a lot on the agenda today. I was wondering if we can maybe have, connect Teresa with Debbie to have a conversation with her about that, because I have a sense it's a complicated and long answer. So, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay, sounds good. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council communications. Do any of my colleagues have, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right through. Let us move to 5D, that receive an annual update from the Community Foundation of San Carlos. And yes, I did want to hear this, Michael. All right, Michael Campbell, President of the Community Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Dugan, council members, staff, and the community at large for your time this evening. So as Adam said, my name's Michael Campbell. I'm a founding board member and the current president of the Community Foundation. I am joined here today by some additional founders and board members. We have Brian Best, our treasurer, Jessica Yang, our founding president, Donna Beck, former board member and current advisor to the board. So again, thank you for your time this evening. So let me start off with giving you an update on our community grant program. So this is really our signature program. And each year, we aim to provide social infrastructure with over $100,000 of financial support to the nonprofits who support our community. And last year, we were able to give $102,000 to 12 local nonprofits. You can see their logos and names up on the board. In addition, we provided $5,000 to One Life Counseling after the floods in this winter to help them with their repairs. What was different last year was we changed our strategy for the grant eligibility. So we changed the criteria to focus on smaller, often newer nonprofits in our community. So those that were spending less than $1.5 million a year. And why did we do that? Well, a few reasons. One is our grants are typically between $2,000 and $10,000. And so we wanted to make sure that we were having an impact with the dollars that we were providing to organizations. Second is that a lot of these smaller organizations, they don't have professional grant writers. They don't have a lot of ability to get money from larger organizations, whether they are governments or foundations, because sometimes they just don't have a track record. And so we, you know, local people, feet on the ground, we can get to know them a little bit better, and in some cases, get them started. And then get, help them establish a track record, which then they can go on and build and grow and get money from bigger funders. The third reason we adopted this strategy is so that our donors could be made aware of some of these newer, smaller organizations. And so our 100% volunteer, diverse community group of grant readers gets to know each of these applicants pretty well and can vet them and make sure that they're, that the dollars going to them is going to be impactful for our community. So we're really thankful for the city's contribution to the grant program, which started as a city program, and the foundation took over a few years ago. Last year, the city contributed $40,000 to support the grant program. 100% of that money went to this grant program. There was no overhead or other expenses deducted. Okay, so in addition to building community through financial support, we also partner with nonprofits and with many of them to bring people together. And that's a way of building community. And we do that especially, especially through the lens of social justice and social equity. And we do that in a three-pronged approach. First, we bring people together to enhance, transform, and build out our public spaces. And so, for example, in the last year, in many years, you've seen our banners across Laurel Street, hopefully. You've seen the murals that we've installed and that we maintain across from Bianchini's, the Horizon Light mural, the Love More mural in the Industrial Arts District. We also host community conversations. And so last year, we had our second annual 21-day Equity Challenge. We had over 100 participants learn more about racism and other social injustices. And in the spring, we hosted a gender inclusion and identity webinar in partnership with the San Carlos Youth Advisory Commission and the San Mateo Pride Center. And we were just blown away by the depth of the conversations and the rich discussions that happened. And last but not least, the third prong in our strategy is to celebrate our diversity. We have an amazingly diverse community. And an example of how we do that is both in person and online, in last May, we celebrated Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander cultures. We held an event at the youth center featuring performances from Zero Dance. We had a community group doing a Bollywood-type dance. We had the Tai Chi group from the ACC perform, and several others. All in all, we have, throughout the year, we've had about 500 volunteers, excuse me, donors, participants, et cetera, engaged in these various activities. And of course, we can't do this alone. We do this with partnerships, partnerships for financial support, partnerships for facilities, for supplies and materials, as well as people providing their expertise and services. On the financial side, just to get into some of the numbers, we had a much better year than the prior year. We had investment returns of $161,000, together with contributions of $94,000 for income of $255,000. And on the expense side, the vast majority of our expenses, as you can see, go into our community building efforts, the grants, and our other community building programs. The expenses, we've kept under budget again this year. If we take a step back and look at the history, the financial history, things started off with the $2 million grant, the endowment grant to the, from the city to the foundation. Since then, we've received almost $1 million in contributions from individuals, businesses, government grants, and other organizations. And on the expense side of things, our grant program is coming close to distributing $800,000. And that's gone to over 58, sorry, not over, 58 unique organizations. The endowment has now grown to $2.36 million, so that's 18%. And we have enough cash in the bank for this current fiscal year and enough to partially fund the next fiscal year. So as I mentioned, the endowment is up 18%, but it didn't come in a straight line. We're invested in a portfolio that has a mix of equities and bonds. It's pretty common for, we're currently at our target allocation of 65% equities, 35% bonds, which is pretty common for community foundations. I do want to call out one other financial element. On a more sober note, we did create a new fund, a temporary fund to support the children of last September's domestic violence horror. And, you know, our community really poured out their hearts and their dollars and put over $50,000 into this fund. And we, the Community Foundation and the whole community, appreciate your effort and your leadership and your support of Cora as they are raising awareness around this issue of domestic violence. I do want to call out that the, all the numbers you saw before do not include this $50,000. This is a separate fund from everything else in the Community Foundation. So briefly, looking forward to the coming year, I'll talk a little bit about our efforts to engage more of the community, to up our game on fundraising, and continue to develop our community board. So I'm not going to go through everything on this slide. There's a lot that we've got going on, but I'll just call your attention to three elements. So first off, we're in the middle of our community grant cycle, our signature program. So this year, we expect again to eclipse our $100,000 goal. We've earmarked $135,000 for the grant program. Assuming we have enough eligible applicants, then we'll, the maximum grant is $10,000, but we assume that we'll have enough there. Second, we've expanded one of our most successful and important programs, the 21-Day Equity Challenge. This year, we've added a track for younger folks, actually, two tracks. So we've added one that's designed for K-8 students and one that's designed for high school students. And we've done that in collaboration with some of the administrators and teachers at the local high schools so that they can incorporate it into their curriculum. The third thing I'll call your attention to is we have our fundraising campaign coming up at the end of the year here. For the first time, we've actually set a goal for our fundraising. So when we started, we didn't really know what to expect, what we might be able to achieve. And we didn't have a whole lot of track record or expertise. We've learned a lot in the last four years. We still have plenty to learn. But we've set a goal of raising 160,000, so compared to the, just shy of 100,000 last year. And we've got, we're fairly confident that we'll be able to hit that. We have our big effort, as I said, this coming November, November, December, where we expect to make a lot of progress and hopefully expand the number of financial contributors to the board, to the foundation. Last but not least, I want to introduce you to some of the new members of our board. So we have Linda Garvey, Lena Silberman, and Scott Jeffries joining the board this year. Each of them brings a unique perspective and diverse background to our board. I'll also point out that we have an open position for our vice president, for our vice president role. Per our bylaws, board members are limited to a maximum of two, three-year terms or six years. Three of our founding board members, Jessica, Brian, and myself, we're in our, entering our fifth year. And so we are actively looking for new leadership for the foundation. And so that's why we decided to leave that spot open. Hopefully, somebody on our board or somebody from the community will seize this opportunity and get to know us and be able to fill that role. So thank you for your time this evening. I want to encourage everyone who's here tonight to join us in the 21-Day Equity Challenge. You can sign up online. It starts on October 1st. And I welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate the update. Do any of my colleagues have questions for Michael? We'll start with Vice Mayor Dugan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Michael. I appreciate the good overview and presentation and all you guys do in our community. Do appreciate that. And the, and also administering and kicking off that Cora grant last year, very, very impactful. And I appreciate your ambitious goals of going from $94,000 up to $160,000 in fundraising this year. What was our goal last year that you set when you raised the 94?
So as I mentioned, we did not set a goal.
Okay.
We didn't feel like we had enough of a track record and infrastructure in place to set goals.
Got it. Well, that's, you know, what, a 70, 80% increase. So that's a stretch goal. I appreciate that. And the, I also appreciate your conservative and rather consistent investment gains. So, you know, it's been a choppy couple of years in the market. So you guys are doing something well right there. And then just finally, I'll point out the $14,000 operating budget. So that's impressive. You guys are clearly all just rolling up your sleeves and volunteering here. So appreciate that. Do you see any movement in that number over the next couple of years?
Yes, we do. So for the upcoming fiscal year, we've budgeted, I can't remember the exact number, but we put a higher amount towards staffing. And so we expect to get help primarily on fundraising, but other things that we can no longer rely on volunteers to do, or that are just, again, infrastructure that's better to outsource.
Okay, got it. And I mean, would that double, or is that, is that number going way up as you staff some things?
It would, it could double, yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's part of the reason for raising the fundraising goal as well.
Got it. That makes sense. Okay, thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dugan. Councilmember McDowell?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Michael and to all the volunteers on the Community Foundation Board. I know it's a labor of love, and it takes a lot of time away from your families and hobbies. And I appreciate your dedication to the foundation. It's doing great work. I just wanted to follow up on the fundraising and ask if you're planning an event in November, or how are you kicking off your fundraising?
Yeah, we're, we're not planning a fundraising event in November. We are considering a fundraising event in the spring. But the November, the November effort will be an appeal. So multimedia, some broad-based, some one-on-one. But it's more of a traditional fundraising. fundraising appeal rather than an event.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McDowell. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the foundation and for your presentation. When I think foundation, I think of fundraising, obviously. So if the community wanted something like a community pool or a community childcare or a community center, is that something that fundraising could go towards?
Yeah, thank you. So that's a, that's a great question. When we, when we founded the Community Foundation and learned what other community foundations across the country do, I mean, there are hundreds of them across the country, there's lots of different models. One thing that's very common is for community foundations to have capital, capital fundraising projects. And we said at the time that when our community is ready, we are ready to, to do something. And I think now may be the time, we're hearing a lot about a desire for some new public spaces, and that's really important to us. So we want to bring people together in public spaces, it's a great way to do that, so that it's accessible by all. And so a community center would be a great idea with public pool, childcare center, event space. I mean, these are the things that we're hearing. I think you guys are hearing much of the same thing. So yeah, we're, we're ready and willing as a community foundation to lead a, lead the public, sorry, the, the private side of fundraising for something like that.
All right, I don't see other hands. I don't have a question, Michael, just a comment. Well, I just want to sort of reiterate our thanks for all the work that you do and all the board does and the, I mean, the significant amount of time and effort to create all the events. It's, I think it's been a good start for the first five years and I think you need, you got some of the six-year, once you get that, you need to maybe stay on as advisors, don't disappear. Not that I think you will. But, and I just, you know, I just, I'm encouraged by the fundraising increase. I think it's something that when, five years ago, when we, you know, made the effort to create this, I think I feel like I want you to continue to think big, be a big resource and continue to do that, and I'm pleased to see that. And I encourage you to, you know, continue to be aggressive on the fundraising because I do think there are lots of opportunities in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. And Crystal, is there any public comment on this item?
No, there are no hands for this item.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Michael. All right, now we will move on to item six, council communications and announcements. Do any of my colleagues have any communications or announcements? I see Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everybody that celebrates Yonkapur a happy Yonkapur.
Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues? All right. With that, we will move on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, the mayor may choose to allow the first five speakers to speak during this time and the balance of the public comment speakers will be called upon at the end of the meeting. So these are for items not on the agenda. Crystal, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I do have one hand up from David Crabbe.
Okay.
David, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Mayor Rack and members of the council. I have a small little comment here. I was trying to report a problem up here in Crestview the other day, and the old website used to have report a problem right on the main page, and now it's kind of buried under about three or four levels of menus. But I finally did find it and I did all, I filled out the, what the problem was and described it and so on, and I pushed send and it said I had to join Facebook. I didn't like that at all, and there used to be a workaround and there isn't anymore. So could you look into that and see if there's some way to do a workaround without forcing people to do Facebook for reporting a problem? That's item one. Item two is the reason I wanted to call is I wanted to report, not report, but ask for the city to look at Vista Park up on Crestview. The park, the fence, the wooden fence along the front of the park is starting to look pretty bad. Some of the fences are falling over and it's not in good shape. And also, there's an invasive species, the star thistle, which is pretty well taking over that park. And it'd be nice if we could kind of try to eradicate that or at least do something to it. We've done that in the past. So that's item two. Item three is for the Public Works Department, I believe. There's a light alier, a light fixture up at the top of Crestview. It's down about 150 feet north of Los Fientos on the west side. And apparently, there was some work down there with, with the wiring and they opened up the little undergrounds, wiring section and they, they broke the cap to it and they never put the cap back on again. And so it's kind of a little hole off to the side of the sidewalk. It's not something you're going to step in, but my dog kind of stepped in it the other day and it'd be nice to get it fixed if possible. And that's it. Thank you for, you know, working with me.
Okay, thank you, David. We will...
And then we, we do have one more hand up.
Can we just, Jeff, is that stuff we can look into in terms of the website and the, the questions raised by Mr. Crabbe?
Happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Crystal, go ahead.
Debbie Baldacci, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, councilmembers. With the atmospheric river that's moving in this weekend in Northern California, I was hoping that the city could have someone take a look at Belmont Creek and portions of Pulgas Creek where there's a lot of debris in the creek and there are plants and just trees growing right in the path, especially on Belmont Creek near Industrial Road. And I know the property owners are responsible for cleaning or clearing their edge of the creek, but there's been so much overgrowth there. If we get many atmospheric rivers, I'm really afraid that we're going to get flooding on the side streets. So if there could be checking out of both Belmont Creek and Pulgas Creek for overgrowth entries, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Jeff, can you add that to the list of things to look into?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Crystal, are there any other public comment?
No.
Okay, great. All right, we will now, now that I lost my page, we'll now move on to item eight, which is the consent calendar. These are items that are typically voted en masse. Do any of my colleagues or any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay? If not, I'm happy to call, call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through F and Item G, Adopting Ordinance Number 1600 and Ordinance of the City of San Carlos, Amending and Replacing San Carlos Municipal Code Chapter 8.07 Tobacco Retailer Permits to Consolidate and Clarify Existing Definitions and Enact Additional Requirements for Tobacco Retailer Permits to Align with the County of San Mateo Model Ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dugan.
Yes.
And Mayor Rack.
Yes. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. All right. Moving on to item nine A, which is a study session, discuss and provide direction on the Northeast Area Specific Plan Draft Concepts and Land Use Options. Okay, and then Megan, before you get started, I just want to make a couple of quick announcements on this. Number one, this is a study session, so there are no final decisions being made on this. There'll be recommendations potentially from the council. We'll certainly listen to public comment on it, but that, that will happen later on in the year or early next year. The intention here is really to hear for the council to respond in terms of what resonates from what we hear, what doesn't resonate and, and where there may be areas for us that we may want to have more information as part of this process. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that sort of what the purpose of tonight is, because I know there's a lot of interested parties in this, in this item. So with that, Megan, please go ahead.
Very much. Good evening, Mayor Rack and councilmembers. And also, good evening to the community members both here in person and those on Zoom. Thank you very much. My name is Megan Woolley-Osdahl and I'm a principal planner in the Community Development Department. And I am the city's project manager for the Northeast Area Specific Plan. So this evening, as Mayor Rack said, the city council is holding a study session on the draft options and concepts for the Northeast Area Specific Plan. And city staff this evening is requesting that the council provide your feedback on the draft options and really which pieces that you like best. We'll talk more about it, but as a next step, we will prepare a preferred option based on the council's feedback tonight and the community input. So for tonight's presentation, we'll provide an overview of the project. We'll also present the draft concepts and options, which are organized by topic as flooding and resilience, transportation and parking, and land use and placemaking. Then we will also share the input we've received to date, both from the community and also from the Planning and Transportation Commission. The city has been working with a team of consultants to support us in the creation of this plan. This team is led by Perkins and Will and they are joined by a number of subconsultants as shown here on this slide. To dive into the project overview, beginning with, where is the Northeast area? So this plan is focusing on the Northeast area, which is approximately 145 acres. This includes the area north of Holly Street to the San Carlos city limits at Belmont Creek and is bound by Old County Road to the west and Highway 101 to the east. The planned boundary does not include the greater East San Carlos neighborhood, although we will thoughtfully be planning for transitions between the specific plan area and the neighborhood. We're also working with our neighbors to the north, the city of Belmont. They are also creating a specific plan for the area north and adjacent to our plan area. So we have been in conversations with city staff at the city of Belmont. The city is creating this specific plan because over the past several years, we have seen increase, increased interest in redeveloping properties in the area. As a part of the City of San Carlos 2022 Strategic Plan, the city council directed staff to create a specific plan to manage and direct change in the area. The city council also directed staff to explore the possibility of introducing housing to the area. This plan provides us with the opportunity to consider and address some big questions, such as how to support the thriving businesses that are there today and celebrate the area's industrial legacy, how to create easy and safe ways for people to walk, bike, take transit, drive and, and move freight throughout the area, and how to address flooding and other environmental issues in the district. So with this planning process, we are not starting from scratch and we're building upon many of the other planning initiatives that the city has undertaken and recently completed as shown here. So the city kicked off this project last fall and we anticipate it will take about two years to complete, wrapping up in October of 2024. We're about midway through the process. At this point, we have developed the draft options, which we'll be presenting tonight. As a next step, well, this evening, we're requesting that the council provide directions on which pieces of the options that you like best. This can be a mix and match between the three draft options that we're presenting tonight. And as a next step, we'll be developing a preferred option based on your guidance. And then after that, the environmental analysis phase will begin, which will take several months. Oh, sorry. Before I pass the presentation to our colleagues at Perkins and Will, we want to share that the concepts before you tonight are, are still very much draft. They recommend, they reflect really bold thinking to address the changes that we anticipate may be coming to the area, but they are truly a starting point, a place to, to launch. We anticipate that the preferred option will be an amalgamation of the draft options. And we've received a lot of really great input from the community, including property owners and business owners, nearby residents and, and neighbors. And again, we've received Planning and Transportation Commission feedback. So first, I'm going to let my colleague Mark present the draft options to you, and then I'm going to walk through the feedback that we've been hearing because we want you to have the context of the draft options as you consider the community feedback. So now I'll press the, pass the presentation to Mark Asness. He's a project manager and associate with Perkins and Will.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me today. My name is Mark Asness. I'm with the design firm Perkins and Will, and I am the project manager for the consultant team. Thank you for having me. Before I dive into the preliminary design options, I just wanted to take a moment to provide them, some clarification around the difference between a vision plan and a specific plan. So a vision plan, which was, what was adopted by this council as part of the East Side Innovation District, is a, essentially, it is a series of big moves and high-level design and policy guidance that really helps create a roadmap for future transformation of a district as it is being used for the East Side Innovation District in terms of conversations with property owners, business owners, developers, to really ensure that we're intentional with growth and community within public benefit. But it is very much recommendations and suggestions, whereas a specific plan, which is what we are doing for the Northeast area, is a legally binding document. So what we are putting forward as part of this specific plan is we will be guiding future growth in the area with updated zoning districts, which will really provide clarity for all, for all parties around allowable heights, densities, parking and development standards. And as a result, it will help us replace the need for plan developments. It will likely replace the existing community benefit system because as part of the specific plan document, there will be a context-specific menu of community benefits that will be included. And finally, it will help streamline the process by either eliminating or reducing the need for development agreements with developers, again, providing as much clarity as part of the zoning districts and the development standards within this specific plan as possible. So now moving into the preliminary draft concepts and options. They are organized, as Megan mentioned, in three categories, flooding and resilience, transportation and parking, and land use and placemaking. And again, I just want to emphasize what Megan said is we acknowledge that these are preliminary concepts and we have received really great informative feedback from community partners and we will continue to modify and refine these concepts to ensure that what we're putting forward is a preferred plan that really strikes the right balance and comes to the appropriate level of consensus. So starting with flooding and resilience, you know, for us to really lead with resilience, it was important for us to really study the past. And these two maps that you see on the screen, they really illuminated for us a couple of key findings. The first, if you look to the map on the left, that is late as 1892, the plan area in which we are working in, which is outlined in red, was bisected by the San Francisco Bay shoreline. And then the map to the right, what you'll see is that a large percentage of the plan area, as late as 1949, was still very much marshland. And this area that you see is home to the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, PG&E and other notable businesses in Industrial Road. So for us, those maps really make a lot of sense when you look at the FEMA flood map for today. You know, some key takeaways is that this entire district is within the 500-year flood zone. And the area that is within that historic marshland area, which you see hashed in the map here, is within a 100-year flood zone, which is going to be the area most vulnerable and most prone to flooding and sea level rise. And as we know from the extreme weather events that occurred in January and February of this year, this district is currently not, the utilities of this district currently cannot properly manage those type of weather events, both today and in the future. The other thing that we really studied as part of our existing conditions report was Belmont Creek as it exists today, as well as the existing open channels. And a couple of things noted is that these channels are very much functioning as a way to collect and convey stormwater, albeit they are undersized. And our environmental reports also showed that these were the areas that have fragmented ecological habitat, the only within the district. So as we start to think about big ideas in terms of infrastructure improvements, we really wanted to take those existing stormwater channels and really use it as a natural starting point for increased investment. So could we really think about extending those channels throughout the district and really think about them as not just ditches for stormwater, but really a celebration of critical infrastructure for a more resilient region? And we wanted to complement those green channels... And we wanted to complement those green channels with recommendations to reconfigure and redesign the major arterials within the district, Industrial Road and Old County Road, to integrate enhanced green stormwater infrastructure, again, as part of a holistic and comprehensive resilience plan. So what could a green street look like? Well, it could look like what you're seeing on the screen here in this photograph. It could be an enhanced lined bioswale that could effectively manage stormwater on the surface. But of course, we want to really think about this type of investment from a multifunctional standpoint, so collecting stormwater, cleaning air, mitigating urban heat island, helping to create public spaces for folks who are working and visiting in the district, helping to create safer multimodal streets. We really see this as being a much more holistic and comprehensive vision of what our public right-of-way can be. And then what could an internal green channel look like? So this would be away from the public right-of-way and potentially could be in the rear setback of new development, where we could strategically place high-flow bioswales that could manage stormwater, but also could be integrating active transportation pathways to allow for folks who are walking and biking to be able to navigate the district safely, away from conflict with vehicles and freight users. And then finally, what could Belmont Creek restoration look like? We had recent conversations with one shoreline who made it abundantly clear that it does not make sense to build right up against the creek, and we are absolutely in agreement with that. So what we are putting forward is an aspirational 50-foot setback that would allow for a widened creek channel to properly convey and collect stormwater, a regraded and naturalized creek bank to integrate habitat, as well as a shared path for walking and biking. So now I'm going to pass it to my colleague Phil Olmstead at Nelson Nygaard, who is on the call, who will speak through transportation and parking.
Hey, Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Phil Olmstead. I'm a principal with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates. I'm going to review our initial transportation and parking work. In this first slide, highlight some of the key takeaways from our work to date. It's also a reminder of the district's proximity to some amazing local and regional transportation assets. But the reality is that when you're on the ground in the district, destinations can feel far away, and streets can feel disconnected or uninviting, especially when you're not in a car. So a big part of our work in the plan is linking the Northeast area to downtown, to Caltrain, and to many nearby community assets, while making sure we design and manage the streets for all users and modes. Next slide. Some key themes have emerged to guide our thinking and our aspirational vision. We want to improve the street network to make it safe, convenient, and comfortable to get around. We need to manage parking with a proactive and district-based approach, and we need to provide a suite of mobility choices if we want district users to walk, bike, and take transit more. Next. We've developed some draft and aspirational concepts for the street network. We want to explore and enhance street grid anchored in some new public streets. These new streets, shown in dash yellow, include an extension of Brigato to the east and a new north-south connector between Taylor and Quarry, really helping to improve connectivity of the street grid and providing space for a district main street that can anchor some of the land use concepts that Mark's going to share in a little bit. Next. We want to explore the concept of productive alleyways, seen here in dash purple. These types of streets can offer additional connections within the street network, but they can also help to reduce the loading and parking burden on some of our main streets, internal streets with some back-of-house options. Next.
Hey, Phil, can I just provide one clarification on this slide?
Yeah, sure.
So these productive alleyways, as well as the next slide that you're going to see here, these are not pathways or streets that would come online with, if a property doesn't redevelop. So what we're trying to show here is an intent that with new development would be a request for greater perosity. So I think there was a misconception that these were required pathways that would come online with existing properties and existing businesses. That is not the case. What we want to show is, as the district continues to change and new development comes online, this would be something that we'd be advocating for as part of the development standards in the specific plan. But it would not be a request, again, as part of existing properties and businesses that are in the district today. Thank you, Phil. I'm going to go to the next slide.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that, Mark. That's a great clarification. Similar kind of talking points here with the paseos or pathways, really intended for those walking and biking. These are shown here in the dash green. And these paseos can provide more options, again, for safe access for those without a car, really trying to leverage those vision, or the vision for a reimagined Belmont Creek, or an enhanced F Street connection to El Camino. And as Mark was talking about, these paseos can also provide another location to introduce many of the green elements that can help manage stormwater. And I'll highlight that any new connections to the residential neighborhoods to the south, we're really thinking and focusing on walking and biking access, not vehicle access. Next. And this map really helps to clarify and show the proposed mobility network concepts overlaid on the current building parcels. We've received a lot of great questions and input about the exact locations of the proposed changes, which we're going to evaluate and discuss in greater detail, as we absorb the commission's feedback, your feedback, and then move forward with revisions and next steps. Next slide. Go back to the parking one. Yeah, there you go. Parking's definitely come up a lot. It definitely works great for some, but many indicated that it's a problem. And we want to make sure that we create a vision and an approach around parking, recognizing that we can't and probably should not build our way out of our parking problems, and needing a new approach, one that really proactively manages on-street parking, making sure those limited spaces at the curb, it's only about 400 spaces within the district. They're really focused on loading, mobility services, short-term parking stays, while making sure we provide central off-street garages for longer-term stays by employees and potentially future district residents. Next. And finally, if we want to grow the district with less traffic, we really, again, need to provide and give people lots of options and make it easier for them to find and use them. This means better connecting the Northeast area to soon-to-be electrified Caltrain and enhanced bus service on El Camino. Everyone's going to take the train or bus, but if we can make that last-mile connection easier, more will. We want to provide best-in-class facilities for walking and biking and modern wayfinding and tools to direct people to their options. And finally, we want to make sure we manage mobility and parking assets effectively, ensuring that the city, regional transportation providers, property owners, and employers are collaborating via coordinated management. And I'll just close, lastly, by, again, emphasizing that innovative and thoughtful approaches to transportation and parking are crucial to the long-term success of the Northeast area, and our aim is to continue to work with you all and the district stakeholders to find the right suite of solutions. So look forward to your feedback, and I'll give it back to you, Mark.
Thanks, Phil. So I'm just going to wrap up with our final category, which is land use and placemaking. When we had our first community workshop in March 2023, we heard a very wide range of different comments around land use, folks saying we need to preserve the diversity of existing businesses, folks saying that we need to enhance amenities and open space for employees and residents, let's look to support housing within the district, especially affordable housing. And of course, we need to make sure that with new development, we are developing context-specific urban design standards to ensure proper transitions and to ensure an optimal urban form. And with these comments, the city and the consultant team developed two distinct design options for the community and for city leadership to review and to provide us with feedback. And as Megan mentioned, we have not determined what a preferred scenario looks like, and in fact, it's not an either-or proposition. We would love to hear your feedback on what do you like about a specific alternative, what do you not like, and we can continue to work toward a preferred alternative. You know, it's important to note, though, with the difference between zoning and development, we do anticipate that this area is going to see significant redevelopment over the next couple of years. And while the city does not own any land within the district outside of the public right-of-way, the city does have the ability to determine what is the right zoning, to make sure that with new growth, development, and investment, we're being very intentional, and we can make sure that we are delivering the right type of public benefit within this district. So really determining what the appropriate zoning and development standards, which will help shape new development as it comes online in the future. And our current zoning, just very quickly, a snapshot of what's currently here today. West of Industrial Road is predominant light industrial zoning, which can go upwards of 75 feet, which is approximately five stories. And then east of Industrial Road is, there are certain sites that are zoned as industrial professional, which can go upwards of 100 feet, which is approximately six to seven stories, and certain sites that are under planned development. And then the land use designations that we are evaluating as a part of these alternatives include high-intensity and medium-intensity commercial, which includes light industrial, but also widens the type of allowable employment uses to include things like life science, biotech, R&amp;D, AI, whatever really is going to come down the line that would be appropriate or potentially the market would be looking for as a part of the future of this district. Also looking at the preservation and enhancement of light industrial. And then finally, being very strategic, but introducing the concept for discussion around residential mixed use. And could there be a select area within this district where it would be appropriate to have residential? And what you see in the high-intensity commercial and residential mixed-use graphics is an area that's shaded light blue, and that's supposed to denote the opportunity for additional heights, bonus heights, in development that would be a part of a community benefits menu. So really thinking about a base kind of entitlement by right and then bonus system in order to deliver on strategic and needed critical infrastructure and community benefits. So the land use options, we have option one, which is all employment, and I will get into more details on that in a minute. And then option two, which is really split into two different alternatives, option 2A, employment plus housing, and option 2B, employment plus more housing. Option 2A really looks at this housing opportunity within the southwest corner of the district. And then option 2B mirrors option 2A with the addition of that triangular area that is bounded by Industrial Road and the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood as an addition of housing. And again, our goal is to evaluate and to really have a discussion around what could, what elements of these alternatives make sense to then be integrated into a preferred alternative. So option one, here are the key attributes that really were important for us as we developed this particular all-employment option. We need to be strategic about new types of commercial development that are coming into the district. We need to think about an effort to preserve the local businesses that are in the district today, and we need to leverage new development, deliver community benefit, and help solve critical issues facing the district to support a more resilient and more prosperous future. So as part of this alternative, we put forward some big urban design moves. One was this idea of district gateways, one located at the intersection of Industrial Road and Quarry Road, which would have required ground-floor active uses. And the other is at the very southern end of the district, right across the way from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation and bounded by the East Side Innovation District. And again, these would be high concentrations of ground-floor life and vibrancy to really help support the district and surrounding areas. The other thing that we put forward as part of this concept is designating Quarry Road as what we refer to as an industrial main street, to allow for ground-floor, what we refer to as PDR, production, distribution, and repair, that a percentage of the ground floor, we haven't determined what that percentage is, would be required to be this maker-light industrial type of spaces, to really help support the larger character of the street. And then when we looked at the land use designations, we identified that intersection of Quarry and Industrial Road as our higher-intensity commercial. We then stepped down as we get closer to Old County Road as our medium-intensity commercial. So this wider range of employment uses is really in the northern half of the district, with Brigato Road as kind of that dividing line. And then as you get south of Brigato, we are proposing to preserve the area as light industrial, a triangular portion of medium-intensity commercial around our second district gateway. And then this area, or the PG&E and Palo Alto Medical Foundation, is identified as institutional, mostly because we know that these are really important anchors, institutional anchors for the district, and they are going to remain in the district. So we wanted to acknowledge and identify them as part of this land use designation. And then this is what it looks like if you were to take those kind of land use bubbles and apply it on a block-by-block basis. So you'll see that dark blue indicates higher-intensity commercial with the ground-floor active uses at the gateway, light blue is medium-intensity commercial, purple is light industrial, pink is that institutional zone, and that hatching along Quarry Road is that overlay for ground-floor production, distribution, and repair. So now moving into our second option, option 2A and 2B, employment plus housing, here are the key attributes in terms of what was really the deciding elements to get us to these specific alternatives. Housing supply and affordability in San Carlos is a critical issue. The city has a responsibility to identify more areas where housing could be built over the next 10 to 20 years to support current and future residents. The southern portion of the district, that southwestern area, is an appropriate candidate for future housing, as it's within walking distance to public transit, about a 10-minute walk. It is in close proximity to El Camino and downtown. And then finally, with new land uses comes investment in critical social infrastructure and community amenities to help support future residents, current residents, and just generally a growing city. So the big ideas that were put forward as part of this option two was really taking that proposed new north-south street that Phil mentioned and designating it as a community main street, really putting our active uses as opposed to in option one, where they were around those district gateways, and really putting it around this central street. And then this opportunity, because of the new calibration of land uses, this opportunity for in purple, a community amenity. So what that could look like, I think, you know, is really up for conversation. But, and I'll also state that while we, as part of this kind of early preliminary concept, put this community amenity in the center here along Brigato, in fact, we can really look for other opportunities within the district where this community amenity would be appropriate. I think for us, we wanted to just put the idea out there for public conversation. So in terms of land use designations, you'll see a large swath of that medium-intensity commercial, which really goes along both the northern edge, as well as extending along Industrial Road. And then in the southwestern corner of the district is the residential mixed use, and then the institutional remains along Palo Alto Medical Foundation and PG&E. And then this is what it looks like on a block-by-block basis. And I do want to just pull up one figure for reference here, is that with option 2A, as part of our kind of high-level modeling, we were forecasting as many as 3,600 units, potential units, within that area that's designated in yellow. And then for option 2B, again, it generally mirrors option 2A, with the exception of the extension of the residential mixed-use area from the southwest corner to now be in that triangular area around Industrial Road and the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood. This scenario really shows a opportunity for, just an option, where the entire Greater East San Carlos neighborhood would then be bounded by a residential type of land use. And with that additional triangle, our modeling forecasts as many as 5,250 units in this area. So the difference between scenario 2A and 2B is approximately 1,650 units. And this is what that would look like, again, as a kind of high-level prototypical zoning map on a block-by-block basis. And then just quickly wrapping up, I just want to show the three options now overlaid with the resilience plan, as well as the transportation alignments, those high-level kind of alignments we were putting forward. This is option one, all-employment, option 2A, employment and housing, and option 2B, employment plus more housing. And just really quickly, again, just for as a reminder, these are the land use designations that we are evaluating as part of these three scenarios: high-intensity commercial, medium-intensity commercial, preservation and enhancement of light industrial, and residential mixed use. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Megan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Before we conclude, we want to share the input that we've heard from the community and the Planning Commission thus far. the planning commission thus far. So beginning in late August, city staff and the consultant team began gathering input on the draft options and draft concepts that we presented to you tonight. These community input opportunities included a virtual community workshop, two in-person pop-up events, an online survey with over 270 respondents, a study session with the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and a study session with the Planning and Transportation Commission, a presentation to the Harbor Industrial Association, and meetings with multiple property owners, including representatives from PG&E, GW Williams, the Brigato family, Delta Star, and Hunter Properties, as well as email correspondence with property owners and community members. So regarding flooding and resilience, thus far, we have heard support for widening the setback along Belmont Creek for the purposes of restoration and access, their support for creating a pedestrian bicycle path, floodable park, and public space along the creek, capturing and recycling water to maintain green infrastructure and street trees in the area, and improving air quality and considering this an important aspect of district resilience. We've heard concerns about the practicalities of a 50-foot setback along Belmont Creek and the impacts to properties. And we've also heard a need for regional collaboration to address flooding issues and really thinking beyond the boundaries of city limits, so working in partnership with Belmont Creek and the county, or, excuse me, City of Belmont and the county. We've also heard the importance of considering feasible projects to address short-term needs. Regarding transportation and parking, thus far, we've heard support for refining the scale of the street grid through pedestrian paseos and street extensions, managing on-street parking. We've heard a strong support for pedestrian facilities such as sidewalks and crossings and bikeways and improvements to the F Street underpass. This was the top priority for our online survey respondents when asked about priorities for transportation in the area. We've also heard support for green infrastructure, extending the East Side Connect project, Caltrain electrification, and creating a citywide, even regional, transportation management association and supporting micro-mobility in the district. We've also heard concerns about impacts of the proposed Brigato Road extension, the proposed community main street, and the alleyway alignments on parcels and on property values. And we've also heard concerns about the location of the proposed alleyways, which may make siding buildings difficult, and that's why we shared during the presentation that those are proposed locations and could be realigned and in conversation with new development. We've also heard the need for clarity on property owner liability for the publicly accessible pedestrian paseos that would be located on private property. Conversely, the community supports ensuring that pedestrian paseos are publicly accessible. And also, interest in clarity around what is allowed on the paseos, walking, biking, especially if connected to the neighborhood, they would be walking and biking paths, not currently envisioned to be vehicular access. And there's also interest in improving the Holly Street and Old County Road intersection for pedestrians and bicyclists to provide direct access from the San Carlos Caltrain So for land use option one, all employment, we've heard support for providing ample space for industrial businesses to continue and grow. We've also heard a strong appreciation of the area today. It's a centralized location along the peninsula for industrial businesses. We've also heard an appreciation for the GW Williams Office Park on Old County Road and the small affordable spaces that it provides industrial businesses to grow and to thrive. We've heard concerns about dwindling space for industrial businesses, both in San Carlos and along the peninsula, concern about the loss of affordable spaces for industrial businesses in specific. And we've, as we did our outreach, we heard something really interesting, which is loss of, concern around the loss of businesses in the northeast area, which support other businesses, both in the East Side and on Laurel Street. We've also heard a need for clarity around how businesses can expand if they become legal, non-conforming uses, especially if the area is rezoned. So for the land use options 2A and 2B that propose housing, we've heard general support from the community for housing in the area and for the locations presented, but there's not a strong preference between option 2A and 2B. People tended to just give input kind of on a bulk option, too. The community also expressed strong support for, for a, community amenity, not necessarily in that location, but a, community meeting, amenity, especially a swimming pool. We've heard concerns about properties, if properties along Old County Road become residential, as shown in these options, that this would greatly reduce the number of affordable spaces for industrial businesses. We've also heard a clear concern about conflicts between the existing industrial uses and new residential uses, so conflicts around noise, light, working hours, traffic movements, et cetera. And then there's also concerns about the specific location of the community amenity space, and Mark did a nice job clarifying that that could shift, that it was put out there as to be responded to. We've also heard a need for clarity on the transition between the existing neighborhood to the south and the possible new residential buildings in the district. And for all options, the community has questions about how the improvements, how much the improvements are anticipated to cost. So a couple more slides, I wanted to present to you the feedback that we heard from the planning commission. So last Monday night, September 18th, we presented the, these same slides to the planning commission, and they discussed the options and provided, here's kind of the key takeaways from their conversation, which is community consensus to, or, excuse me, commission consensus to include housing, but again, not consensus on how many units or the exact location. There's a shared desire among the commission to respect the existing light industrial businesses in the economic ecosystem that is there today. There's also commission consensus on improvements for flooding, but again, concerns about the practicalities of a 50-foot setback and need for coordination with the City of Belmont. A lot of this echoes what the community has been sharing. The commissioners appreciated the proposed transportation network, but were concerned about the specific locations and their impact on properties. And they also recognized the need for a more detailed implementation plan, which would iron out a lot of these questions. So this, this goes through by topic again, I'll be brief here because I, we've covered this, but again, support for, clearly support from the commission for infrastructure improvements to address flooding and environmental resilience. Again, concerns about the specific locations of the proposed streets and alleyways, but lots of support for the bike and pedestrian improvements within the area, strong support for preserving the light industrial uses and businesses and enhancing the area for existing businesses. And then I wanted to provide you with a, or we wanted to provide you with a few nuances around housing and what the commission recommended regarding the housing locations. Again, there was general support from the commission, and they really recognized the need to introduce housing to address future housing needs and also future regional housing needs assessment numbers coming from the state. There was conversation amongst the commission that really no area of San Carlos should be considered, quote, "off-limits" for housing, and that it's also very important to provide enough housing to balance job growth. They were also interested in transitioning, both transition from today's, if residential is proposed, transition from today's light industrial uses to new residential, and again, on the theme of transitions between the neighborhood and the district, seeing, as Mark showed in some of the slides, it would be, likely be multi-story residential. And then for the specifics of the housing location, the commission's guidance, some commissioners supported option 2A, others supported option 2B. One commissioner liked option A, but with the inclusion of housing. And then we've created this map for you because another commissioner proposed limiting housing to the area south of Taylor Way. So that would be only having residential in the area outlined in black on this map. So I wanted to tell you, mention that as well. The planning commission also had questions about, really, what is the city's vision for the northeast area? Is the city interested in preserving today's light industrial businesses, encouraging new biotech, or future other developments, or a mix of both? What financial resources does the city have to implement the plan, and could community benefit dollars raised from potential new development in the area stay in the area? So for our last slide, as a reminder, this is a study session, and staff is asking for the council's feedback on the draft options and recommendations about any preferred pieces or preferred, yeah, preferred pieces that you like. We really would like you to consider and identify what you like best. This obviously can be a mix and match. So this concludes our staff presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Megan, and Mark and Phil for the presentation. So I think what I'd like to propose is that we do council questions, and then take public comment, and then we can provide direction and any kind of feedback from the council after we've heard from the public. Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay. All right. So that'll open it up to questions, and I would just say, if you do want to make a public comment, please fill out a yellow card and hand it to the, to either Jeff Maltby or Crystal at the front there, if you're here in person. So with that, I'll start with council member Venkatesh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Megan. Sorry. I just had a question regarding community outreach. So it started back in August, correct?
The first raise, excuse me, the first phase of engagement started in March of this year, so we did phase one, that was really on existing conditions, what do you like about the area today? And then, yes, that's right, that the engagement for these draft options really began on, to be very specific, on August 30th, when we held our first community workshop for these draft options.
I just had a comment around that. So in August is when we're traveling or families are traveling. And also, there is another community outreach, I think it was on a back-to-school night. So I just wanted to make a comment, like, maybe we can look at the school schedule when we're doing these community outreaches? That was, that was my, just a comment.
Yeah, we, we did, we, we really appreciate that because a parent emailed us. We did look at the days that the school started, but we didn't necessarily hone in on the different back-to-school nights, and we really appreciate that, and that's definitely something we'll consider as we move forward with our engagement for all of our, our planning projects. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have more, but I'll save them.
Go ahead.
My second question is regarding, thank you for the planning commission, but we did, we checked with the other commissions, the EDAC and the Parks and Recs also, and get their feedback?
We did meet with, we did meet with EDAC, and we can provide an overview of that. We have not yet met with the Parks and Rec Commission, but we can, we most certainly could.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Venkatesh. We'll do councilmember Collins and then Vice Mayor Dugan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Megan, for a very lengthy and thorough report. I do also appreciate the fact that we are basically six months into a year-and-a-half-long process. So it seems to me that there's lots of opportunity for people to have additional input. I'd be surprised if the entire industrial community over there is not engaged by now, if not, they should be. So I thank you for the outreach, and I know that the word is out. Couple of questions. You mentioned the 50-foot setback, purely aspirational. What, what is the setback now?
The setback is currently 25 feet, although property owners can request a shorter setback than that, so that's, that's not necessarily always the minimum.
How was the 50-foot setback arrived at? Was it an environmental consideration? Was it consulting with environmental organizations, state regulations?
So at the very beginning of this process, we met with One Shoreline, as I mentioned in the presentation, and they're really looking at the entire length of Belmont Creek. And of course, knowing that the northeast area is particularly vulnerable, being at the most kind of downstream component of the creek and one of the areas that is most vulnerable to flooding from the creek, they had put forward a minimum of a 35-foot setback. And for us, we wanted to, again, thinking about really effectively managing the stormwater that is in the district, especially from creek flooding, but also thinking about finding other synergies and achieving other objectives, such as, again, like, opportunities to enhance and, and really follow through with the city's climate action plan, and thinking about opportunities for active transportation. We thought that 50 feet is a, again, aspirational, but if we're really looking to not just think about stormwater, but think about this from a placemaking and more holistic kind of standpoint, that 50 feet would be an appropriate setback.
Well, I, that part I get, from the environmental standpoint. I think that's a noble, a noble aspiration. If I was a property owner along there, it seems to me it might be quite a bit to give up. But anyway, just, Mr. Mayor, just have two more for now. This is basically a discussion of what the future looks like, right? This is not absolute planning, we are going to do this in five years, six years, 10 years. This is, we are just looking at what's going to happen 10, 15, 20 years from now, or what could happen. Okay. Given that, and we're, now we're talking about residential, you're talking about infrastructure improvements, which was mentioned in your slides, what do those look like when it comes to putting in residential communities? Basically, we'd be adding a whole residential community. What do those infrastructure improvements look like, or how do they differ, say, from a commercial improvements? And, and how would that be paid for?
Well, I would say that as we hone in on what a preferred alternative is, and if residential is in fact part of that preferred alternative, as we move forward with the specific planning process, and we start to develop our standards that are going to be embedded in both the zoning district as well as the plan document, we will really need to get specific to understand what is the type of community infrastructure to support a healthy and vibrant residential community, whether that is open space, again, like, thinking about opportunities for transportation and access to Caltrain and to El Camino and downtown. I think for us, we need to understand what is the preferred alternative, and then if residential is in fact part of that, then we can really dive into both the horizontal infrastructure, but also the standards that need to be in place to ensure that the residential development is in and of itself equitable and healthy and can really support people at different stages of life. So for us, that's going to really get into the details as we start to develop the document.
And my last question for now is, there's a couple of references in there to a park and then community amenity, and they had different colors, they were part of that triangle. What's the difference between those two?
So that's a great question, and to say, the, on the maps, the park, I think as we envisioned it would be a, a green space, would be a kind of traditional park, that mini Burton Park, obviously, mini, mini. With the community amenity, there is no definition of exactly what that could be. There's been conversations about a community center, or a library, or an aquatic center. So that's really open to conversation. We will say that those are currently located on private property, and so we would need to do a lot of thinking around that, and so they, they are proposed in the options, but that, that we will obviously need to have more conversation with that as the planning process moves forward.
I noticed that they were in option one, but not in two and three, although there was a conflicting slide there that suggested that there might be a community area in, if we only went forward with option one.
That's right. So in option one, we only propose a park space, whereas, and, and that park space really draws upon the F Street underpass, and so that, it ties in with that underpass. And so the thought behind that is it could create a green space, kind of at that, that node. But then you'll see in option 2A and 2B, we incorporated also a community amenity space. The thinking was that if you have housing and residential, that residents will need a place to recreate and play. And so that's, you'll see that the community amenity space shows up in the two options with housing, but not in the option that is considered all employment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Dugan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Megan. I appreciate the thorough overview, and I also, join my colleagues, I appreciate the, the, you know, a lot of the outreach that we've done to this area and to the existing users and the owners, and I'm glad many are in the room tonight and tuned in. This is a vital discussion, of course. This is a vital discussion, of course. It kind of begs the question, though, kind of at the highest level, like why are we doing this? Like, what were we seeing in the area? What motivated this? What would happen here if we did nothing?
It's a great question. So my understanding is that the reason that we embarked upon this, that the council gave us direction as a part of your 2022 strategic plan, is that we have, it's kind of two-pronged. We have been hearing and learning of many properties that have been for sale, that were sold. And these are properties that were often in families for decades, generations, had come on the market. And so we're seeing properties changing hands. We're also seeing properties being consolidated, and lots of inquiries from developers around the possibility of developing biotech and life science buildings. And so the, if I may, my understanding is that the council's interest was that we really kind of quote "get ahead of the development" so that we could have a community conversation about what we really wanted in the district. This has afforded us the opportunity to talk more holistically about flooding and environmental resilience for the district, more holistically around transportation. But that was the impetus of this, was we had started to see, again, properties changing hands, and there had not been any land use changes in this area since it was annexed to the city in 1997. So this has provided an opportunity to do really thoughtful planning for the district.
Got it. And of those developments that we heard about or saw on the horizon, what was the nature of those developments?
Do you mean what were they interested in exploring and building?
Yeah, like even, you know, under the zoning that existed there and the interests we were hearing, what likely was going to happen?
Likely, mostly what we were hearing was biotech. So as Mark shared, around five stories is allowed today, but we were also seeing interest in planned developments, which is a, you know, I mean, y'all know it's a conversation and can have its own parameters. And so it was lots of biotech, life science development.
Got it. And if those went in at kind of the rate we're seeing elsewhere on our east side, you know, what impact would that development, had we done nothing, likely have on existing buildings, existing uses? What's being done there now?
I guess, I think I would need Al to say, if you, I'm going to call up the bigwig here. For me, I would rather not speculate, so I'm going to let Al speak to that, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you, Megan and Mark. So your question was, what would we see there if we had allowed development to continue in the, in the direction that it was, it was going when we, just before we started this plan? And so I think what we would see is more of these biotech developments, very similar to what we saw in our east side Innovation District Vision Plan area. And as you know, one of the differences in that area versus this one is we had a lot of applications that were more farther down through the process, and some of them, you know, years' worth of work, and they were coming to fruition at that point. And there was a significant amount of square footage at that time. And so I think you would see more of what we're seeing in the Vision District, but without policy guidance, without this holistic idea that Megan mentioned with regard to mobility, to environmental stewardship and resiliency that you're all interested in. And so I think you would have just seen more of that. We would have done a great job in terms of helping them plan through that and trying to connect those with the community, but a specific plan is certainly a way better place to go for communities like ours.
Got it. And, you know, I've heard a lot of concern about displacing existing uses. It seems to me that kind of level of development and activity that we were seeing would have done a heck of a job displacing existing uses on its own. So to what extent does this planning process allow us to maybe even preserve some of the existing uses? I noticed that PDR zoning, and can we hear a little bit more about that and how that type of planning could actually allow existing uses to, you know, continue and even thrive under this new planning?
So having the time to take a thoughtful look at this gives you the opportunity to come up with a more fine-grained approach in terms of how larger development could displace some of the smaller businesses and services that we have in our community. So that's what this does. It gives us pause. It gives us time to look at zoning techniques and perhaps even incentives or requirements of new developments to incorporate these smaller businesses into the development. As you have seen on some of the sections that Mark showed you earlier, some of the ground floor is available for these small businesses to go into. We can talk about the heights of the ceilings. We can get really specific in terms of the needs of these smaller businesses. And we've done that in other areas of the community, and for instance, in our retail area, we talk to those people. What are your needs? How do we help, how do we make this zoning more or better for your businesses?
Got it. So in a lot of ways, that PDR zoning is a recognition of existing uses and, you know, an ability of us as a city to plan to allow those existing uses to continue to exist and even thrive under this new intense development. Is that, am I getting that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dugan. Councilmember McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments by the Vice Mayor and Al, your answers. It was really helpful. I think, kind of building on John's comment, I want to ground our conversation in one kind of basic question, and that is what catalyzes change in this area? Is it the plan, or is it when private property owners make economic decisions on their own to sell their property in the private market?
That's an excellent question. So the plan provides policy guidance and development standards, but it is, the catalyst would be property owners selling their properties. So the plan may provide guidance on a site, but nothing's going to happen there unless the property owner decides that they want to make change on their own site that they own, or if they want to sell to a new developer who then becomes a new property owner who wishes to make change. So that's right. Yeah, no, of course.
I'd just like to add a little bit to that. And what a specific plan does is it provides clarity and certainty to the marketplace. You're saying as a city, here's what we want, here's where we are, and it also can streamline the process for new development. And so what you will see in a lot of specific plan areas, once they're adopted, is vitality. And you'll see immediate interest in new things happening in those areas.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So then my next question is about development agreements. And I guess I didn't really realize that having a specific plan in place kind of takes away the need for development agreements, since I'm hoping we can delve into that a little bit more on how we would actually calculate community benefits. I'm concerned if we lose some negotiating power because we're zoning upfront, you know, if a developer comes in and they, you know, bring forward a project that just meets our perhaps increased zoning, and then we lose out on community benefits. So can you, can you walk us through that a little bit?
Sure. And I think that what we have the opportunity to do is to build in some baseline community benefits that we talked about in our east side Vision Plan area. And if you'll remember those charts that we looked at a million times, there were a lot of things that we, we thought, or the council believed were necessary to create a thriving district. And we said that those ought to be just put into new development. And so it allows you the ability to require some of those things as just baseline, you have to do these things. The specific plan also allows you to, as I think we saw in some of those sections, and I might just try and move back to a couple of these just for reference, is to look at the development and say there's a, there's some incentives for possible, future possibilities, like if you, if we allow you to go up a few more stories, we will ask for these community benefits to be, you know, negotiated. So it's a list or a menu that you come up with, that you agree on as a council, these are the things that we believe are important, but to get to those, to get that extra square footage, these are the things that you'll need to do. That would then replace this negotiated process. It's somewhat negotiated, but it's more certain for the developer and the community in knowing it's on the table. So that's the replacement of the development agreement.
Thank you. That's helpful. Do we lose, what if we feel like they're bringing forward kind of weak menu options? They're choosing the easiest stuff? Do we, do we still have the power to say, no, we need, we need more from this development? Or what, what do we lose in the specific plan?
Well, that will require some thought. I think that question is going to require a little bit more thought, but I think we need to be very careful about what is in there and what are the community benefits that are real in terms of making change and moving the needle in this, in this district. And we can help you with that, and we can, we've heard a lot of things from the community, from the council, from business owners, property owners. So I think we can come up with a pretty good menu, but it may not have everything in it. There are things that we can't foresee that may come up years from now.
I think that's.
That was a good tie-in, because what I was going to add to that is, with the specific plan, you lose flexibility in the future to react and change to changing circumstances, but you gain predictability in terms of what your vision was in totality for that particular area.
And just to add one other thing to that is, you can amend your specific plan. So it's a dynamic plan. So any plan, luckily, in the state of California, the state law allows the city council to revise based on these market forces or other forces.
Okay. I, thank you, Al, and thanks, Jeff. I have a few more, but I'll reserve my time. I'll let other colleagues speak.
Do you want to do one more now and then, or whatever you'd like?
Okay, I have one more. Okay, thank you. So this is a question, I think, for our city attorney. Greg, from a legal standpoint, with thinking about this plan, I know we need to avoid spot zoning, and I'm hoping that you can provide some clarity on perhaps some things that might not be feasible or that would raise serious legal questions. I don't want to get too far down the road and then find out that we're kind of putting ourselves in a bind legally as a city. So how do we, how do we think about that?
I think the best way to approach that issue is to, I will be involved in the process as, as things develop, and when, when the final recommendation comes to you, that part of my analysis will be included in it. It's kind of hard to foresee any particular circumstance because a lot of, a lot of the issues are really fact-specific for a different development as it comes forward. But as far as the plan process and how that would, how that would play out, I anticipate I'll be involved in that, in that process to make sure we're legally compliant.
Okay. I just don't want to get too far down the road and then you find that, you know, putting housing in a certain area is not a good idea, and we've kind of already gone down that path. So, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions, and we'll see if there's another round. So Megan, I think this maybe is for you in terms of, I know we talked about, and with properties changing over or significant events happening with properties in terms of if we hadn't, so if we had any zoning changes, let's say, so if we did zone some for housing, that property was previously light industrial, are they, would that property owner be able to do any sort of general tenant improvements? Is that something we would build into the plan and say, well, wait, I mean, I need to upgrade certain things. I can't just be like that?
So part of that will be answered as we go along further in the planning process and have a sense of what, what the preferred option is. But I will say if a similar situation happened today where there was a use on a site, the site gets rezoned, the use on that site would become what's called a legal non-conforming use. And so we have a part of our code that speaks to that. They are allowed to expand their use pending a minor use permit approval by our zoning administrator, which, as y'all know, is our city manager. But tenant improvements would be allowed. And we can get into the details of that more, but that is definitely something that the community has asked about in reference to this plan, and something that we will be considering as we go along further with the implement, development of the implementation plan.
Okay. Thank you. And then I guess one of the questions I had, and I, and we talked a little bit about, there's clearly sort of parking challenges in that area. Is there any thoughts about kind of how we address some of those parking challenges, what that looks like, any thoughts, you know, as part of one of these three options? Is there one that says, gosh, this is really going to be the, from a parking and mobility standpoint, Option B is the best, or Option A is the best, type of thing?
Yeah. I will say that we might pull up Phil to answer this. What Phil, our transportation consultant, often says is, there's not a parking problem in the northeast area, it's a parking management problem. So some areas have a lot of parking options, some areas don't have a lot of parking options. And so implementing a really thoughtful parking management system will be one approach that we will have to our transportation network. We currently don't have a specific parking management strategies outlined for the three options, but there are lots of different tools in the parking management toolkit to address parking holistically in the district, once we get further along with the preferred option development.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. And then I just wanted to add a question about housing. So I know you sort of have option, you have sort of three options that you, and we could sort of mix and match, and with two of them have housing, and then one of the planning commissioners sort of had a different idea about sort of Taylor South and sort of the area closer to In-N-Out. Do you have a sense of sort of how many housing units that might look like? I know we sort of heard 3,600, 5,200. If we did sort of that sort of hybrid approach, what would, do we, do we have an idea of what that might be? Or if not, I'd be curious to find out at some point if that, we don't know that answer as we make decisions.
Yes. I'm trying to do math, math and kind of vision planning right now. So I would say it, I mean, would you estimate, Mark, I'm going to ask you to come up to, if this is 3,600 minutes.
You don't need an exact number. I'm just more curious. Are we 1,000 units? Are we 2,000 units for that?
You know, Mayor Rec, with that proposal from the PTC, we haven't as of yet done the modeling, but we absolutely can. With your direction, we're happy to go and do that modeling and come up with an estimated figure of what that could look like in that select area. But as of right now, we don't have that number.
Totally fair. I'm curious about that. We'll see with my other colleagues if they are interested in that as well. And then my, I just, before I sort of turn it back over, just a quick follow-up, I guess, question to maybe, and Megan, I'm sure you can, or Al, on while we, while we lose some of the negotiation on the community benefits, the impact fees are not, nothing affects the impact fees that we currently have in place. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. I will go now to Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'm just trying to understand a specific plan because I'm new. So with a specific plan, when a developer, if it's zoned for housing and a developer comes and does housing, it doesn't go through council any longer, it's just zoned for housing? Does it skip that process?
That's, that's an excellent question. I, I think I need to actually ask, we're conferring.
Oh, thanks. I guess that was a good question, then.
Stop the planners.
Generally, if you say that you want to have residential in that specific area, it would be permitted, meaning it wouldn't have to necessarily go to the planning commissioner of the city council. And really, that's, that's the intent, is to kind of think through all the impacts and the possibilities of it before you do that, before you rezone it, so that you give more certainty to the marketplace. It's a faster, streamlined process.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. Do we consult with the airport commission, since I'm on that commission?
That's an excellent question. They are aware of this. They are aware of this, well, we've, we've, our colleagues at San Mateo County who work with the airport are aware of this plan. And we're also aware of the height limitations imposed by the ALUCP, which I could figure out what the acronym stand for, but the plan that governs the environs around the San Carlos Airport. So we have been in conversations, yes, with the airport colleagues. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Venkatesh. I will go to Councilmember Collins and then Vice Mayor Dugan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I just have one question. There's been a lot of discussion about new roads. That certainly seems to have gotten a lot of people's attention. New roads through existing properties. So let's suppose that that ends up in the plan and I own that property or I am buying that property and that property has a road planned through it. What, what happens? Do I deed part of it over to the city? Does the city buy it from me? Does the city have an easement? How does that work?
Is this a question for you, city attorney?
And what happens if the property next to me doesn't want to do it?
Well, this is something that we are obviously going to be discussing, but generally dedications of public streets come through subdivision maps or parcel maps that people propose. So it would come through the developer. I mean, there's other hypotheticals where the street could be built, but it's, it's something that we haven't really seen in San Carlos in a long time where, where there's eminent domain or something like that that happens. That's a really big process that, but I think the, what, what I understand in this plan is it's really going to be driven by developers and dedications of rights of way. And maybe these alleys and other things that are, they're going to have a public, public ownership would be a dedication. And then the, the other privately owned paseos and things of that nature would, would be something either through a development agreement or an agreement with, with the developer as part of their, as part of their project.
I mean, talk about aspirational. That seems very aspirational to me. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, just following up on Councilmember Collins' question. So perhaps it is aspirational, but you know, I also share the concern about giving up our leverage in planned development because it seems to me that if we allow more dense development than otherwise planned here, then we have quite a bit of room for public benefit. And the, one of the obvious public benefits here would be the dedication of, of the, of a public street easement. Is, am I thinking of that the right way? Like that's, like that's how you get it done, right? You allow something more significant to be developed and in exchange, you know, the street gets dedicated. You know, that, that actually seems feasible to me.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much right. I mean, basically what you're doing is you're, you're sort of pre-designing what those community benefits are. And in this area, maybe more so than in other parts of town that we've seen development, I think there's a recognition that the infrastructure that exists there today is not necessarily the same infrastructure and that we have in the rest of the community to support business and development. You know, this part of the city really, really is the youngest part of our city. You know, this was unincorporated county area and, and unincorporated county area tends to, in most places, have had less infrastructure investment made by the government entity over time because that type of development for a county is really kind of an ancillary function for the county, whereas compared to a municipality, you know, planning and building, as you are very well aware, and community development in general, is a huge part of what a city exists to facilitate and, and do.
Got it. Yeah. You know, I mean, and it occurs to me, you know, like how does that happen and is it really a stretch or is it wishful thinking that we end up with a road? But in many ways, I mean, that I could see, you know, if someone wants to buy that property and we allow them greater development than is otherwise allowed and they dedicate the road, I mean, what do we see the use of that road being? I want to make sure I understand it. So we're talking about, you know, mixed-use commercial, something like a new district with, you know, restaurants with, you know, like, so we're talking about basically creating another almost downtown-like district. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
I would say, I would say that really depends on the guidance from the council this evening, that there, that, and in some options, that road would serve more as a way for businesses to function. This was option one, would be businesses to function, employees to get to work, people to walk and bike. If the council did provide direction that you liked, option 2A or 2B, then that could be a possibility that it becomes a commercial, excuse me, that it becomes a commercial district, has active ground floor uses, that type of thing. So it really does depend on which pieces of which option, options you prefer. But to give a non-veg answer, if you go with option 2A or 2B, currently it's proposed as a, as a street with active ground floor uses.
Got it. Because I mean, it strikes me that if, if an owner ends up with, you know, the property to build something on and a slice of that ends up being a new commercial district, maybe something like Bay Meadows, I mean, that, that's quite valuable. I mean, have we done any estimates or examining, like how much value are we going to add to these parcels by doing this kind of interesting, proper planning?
We haven't done it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We are, we do, we're kind of in the early phases of looking at the economic analysis for the overall, what tax revenues the city could get, but it's on more of a district-wide basis. And I think you'll hear from more property owners during public comment, but I think there is concern about location of the streets in, in relation to the parcels, how it kind of bisects the parcels, that kind of thing. So we, we do have a map, which I can pull up, of, of the proposed streets and how they do overlay with existing parcels. So I think there's more thinking to be done around the exact locations and sort of how the exact locations and the ripple effects of the economic benefits that that would have. So it's not really a yes, a clear-cut answer, I think, right now.
Got it. Well, I do appreciate that although this would be bold planning, that it can be adjusted over time or otherwise fine-tuned as, as facts evolve. But we do have a lot of owners who are, you know, concerned. What, what does this mean to them? What, you know, what is the impact? Did you have something to?
No, I just wanted to kind of build off what Megan was saying and kind of reaffirm that, yes, when we were talking about this high-level thinking of these preliminary design options in the framework, especially as we think about the growth of this district, more people, different types of uses, a more distributed street network is very important. Thinking about how we create greater connectivity both within the district as well as really integrating into the larger surrounding fabric is absolutely critical. But I think what Megan was saying, which is really important, as we continue to refine these options and move forward, the location and alignment of these new streets have not been, we have not figured that out yet. And I've had conversations with members of the community here who have really helped educate us and really give us an understanding of what the implications would be. And we are very much committed to, in partnership, understanding if there was an alignment, how would we make it so that it has the least amount of impact on those property owners? And yes, so that's, I just wanted to make sure that was abundantly clear, that yes, a connective street network is absolutely critical, but the alignments are not set and we are still working with that in partnership with our stakeholders and the larger community.
Got it. I appreciate that. That's, that's important for all of us to understand. And then finally, I, you know, our owners do have a lot of questions, of course. How does this all impact them? What is kind of the, the meaning of all this to them? And we don't have all the answers here tonight. It's, this is a process, of course, but in general, I mean, it strikes me that good planning is generally a win-win, a win for the community and, and a win for the folks that want to, and, and owners. And, you know, have we, are we going to do an economic study of some kind? I mean, I know properly planned districts end up, you know, being a lot more valuable for everyone involved. And I'm just, you know, do we have any answers like that or at least a sense of what we can tell our owners? Hey, this is definitely going to add value to your individual properties or not. I mean, I, you know, if we can, I'd like to provide some idea of that to folks.
We, as I mentioned, we have started preliminary economic analysis. So, but it is, it is more on the, on the city scale around the general, general revenue for our, for our funds. So it's looking at the, the tax implications, both positive, but also what would take funds out of the general fund, such as additional police presence, additional fire presence, additional services. I'm going to turn to Mark and say, that's the extent to our, so it's not looking at the individual property owner. Okay. That's right. Thank you. Thank you for letting me confer. But that, we, we are not, would not be doing an analysis that considered the benefit to the individual property owners as a part of this specific plan process.
You know, I would just say even some, some case study-type examples, like, you know, Bay Meadows strikes me as a pretty good, you know, approximation of what we might be doing here. So what, what was the before and after values of the properties that we're sitting on were, you know, that, you know, the new office buildings and the new ice cream shop is and the new, you know, just like what happened there? It seems, you know, like a very activated, thriving district and I'd imagine value was created, but I don't know that and it'd be good if we understood that.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dugan. Councilmember McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two follow-up questions. I too shared the concerns of the vice mayor about splitting a property into, for the road connections. And Councilmember Collins mentioned, you know, what happens if someone builds part of the road and then it doesn't continue? So I'm really glad to hear that we're going to put more thought into how those roads wind through potentially this area. Because I know we're trying to be creative, but we also need to be realistic about what, what's possible. So I wanted to thank you for that. My question is about the housing and how dense the housing needs to be to pencil out. And when you calculated those numbers of housing units, how tall, what, what were the heights of those? And also were you, were you doing a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units or all studios? I want to make sure that we're kind of being realistic with, with the housing numbers too.
We have started to sketch out initial options for the housing. I'm, I'm going to answer your questions in reverse order. As a part of the calculations of what, what could be developed, we're, we're most definitely considering studio, one, two, and three bedrooms, as well as multiple affordability levels. Do you want to, would you be able to speak to the heights or do we need to pull that up?
Well, I will say that, you know, in partnership with our economic and real estate advisors, Strategic Economics, they were informing us of what really in the market right now would actually pencil, to your point. And to that extent, we really need to go upwards, beyond five or six stories and really look in select areas, what could potentially an eight-story residential development look like? However, I will say that we have been thinking about that toward the interior of the district and really stepping down and making a gradual transition so that it wouldn't have that same impact on the greater East San Carlos neighborhood. But understanding again that what the market is, is kind of putting forward here is not necessarily three-to-four story buildings, but something higher for it to pencil in this area. But knowing that we, as part of our modeling, we did put the appropriate level of step-downs to make sure that we were being respectful to the surrounding context.
Okay. Thank you. So when you were doing the calculation and got to 5,000 units, that included an eight-story building somewhere and then stepping down a seven-story, a six-story?
That's right. And that is something that we've heard loud and clear from the community, is interest in the transitions. Also want to share that along the greater East San Carlos, there is, excuse me, neighborhood, there is a 50-foot easement between the neighborhood and the northeast area. That easement is owned by the city and county of San Francisco, which is very interesting. So it's not likely that we would be able to redevelop that or, or, you know, we would need to dig into that further, but just to share that there is an expanse between the neighborhood and the, where residential could begin in the northeast if we choose to go that route.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Megan.
All right. Did you have, Vice Mayor Dugan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One final, final up, follow-up. Just the PDR zoning, you know, I just, I like the, the idea of that. I like that the thought there is to help preserve and integrate the existing uses of small businesses, the folks who, you know, provide the necessary services that, that we all need and that other businesses in our community need. One thing that really struck me in this presentation is PDR is laid out in option one, and there's a good amount of it, but it's not in option two, or 2A or 2B. And I mean, there's nothing inconsistent between PDR and housing, is there? I mean, it just seems like we'd want PDR and, I mean, you know, preserving existing uses, I think is, you know, can definitely be accomplished. I think we need that as a community. And I'm just curious, why wouldn't that be part of option two?
Well, I'll say just the nature of these alternatives was really to show the differences. So for you to identify this as being something that would be appropriate in this alternative or something for us to consider as part of the preferred alternative is inherently the intent of these options is for us to really show the differences. I will say that in terms of the integration of PDR into a residential development, I would want to advise with our real estate and economic advisors, I do not believe that it's a very feasible type of typology that we see often. I know it's not something we see often, not to say it's not possible, but again, if really looking toward our economic experts to understand, would that be something that could actually get built?
And I wasn't, I mean, actually, if you just go up to Dogpatch, you see quite a bit of it around here, but I wasn't implying we would need PDR in the residential areas. I'm just saying it should be, in my view, part of any option we do. And I just want to make sure there was no reason we couldn't have PDR in the commercial districts of option two with residential.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see other hands up for questions and I don't have anymore. I get to go last, so I don't, everyone asked my questions for me. We're at about two and a half hours, so I'm gonna, I know people have been really patient, but I want to ask to just take like a five, let's say, let's do a seven-minute break to 9:35 and then we'll come back and take public comment. Back in, in session, and we will now move to public comment. Public comment is limited to two minutes per individual. I ask that you be respectful of the two-minute timer, and I know there's obviously lots of interest in this topic, and just ask that you be respectful in your comments as well. So, Crystal, let's, we have some, how many do we have online?
Oh, a bunch of hands just came up. Three, four, five, about 10 online.
Let's, let's start in person here. People have been patient and waiting. I like to give them first crack at it.
So first in person would be Kate Fickell, and you'll be followed by Howard Jones.
Is it working? There, there it goes. So my name is Kate Fickell, and my husband, Jerry Carroll, and I own 501 Brigado Road in the northeast area. Our tenant is BYD, the company that provides most of the electric buses operating on the peninsula. Our parcel is 1.6 acres. In the specific plan, it is crisscrossed by the new north-south road, as well as a new productive alley. These would divide our property into four small lots of uncertain function and potential. We are here to urge the city council to make the following three recommendations. First, make no land use changes until the social and economic value of the northeast area is better understood and communicated. Displacing the existing businesses will have significant negative impacts on the quality of life of San Carlos residents. Second, remove the new north-south road and Brigado extension from the plan unless the city has the resources to acquire the affected properties through eminent domain. Our fear is that if we were to seek to redevelop our property ourselves, or sell to another party, we would be forced by the plan to allocate space for the road and the productive alley. The comments this evening about the productive alley, notwithstanding, we, we had not heard those before. There is no guarantee in this plan that the road or productive alley would ever be built. Nonetheless, we would have been required to sacrifice a significant portion of our property for this uncertain future. These properties, many, many properties are in the northeast area. This is not the Baylands. This is not the old track that is a greenfield site that could be redeveloped by a single developer on a very large scale. This would involve compiling numerous properties over a period of time, which leaves all of us under a cloud of uncertainty. Third, eliminate the productive alleys and pedestrian paseos through areas that are zoned commercial and especially industrial. They are inconsistent with the safety and security needs of industrial facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Howard Jones, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Carlos Hernandez.
Good evening. My name is Howard Jones. I'm a property owner in the unincorporated portion of the Harbor Industrial Area with a Belmont address. I bought my property in 1978. I also joined the Harbor Industrial Association in 1978, and have been very busy trying to protect our rights ever since then. Our primary concern in the HIA is to preserve our business community. For years, we opposed hostile annexation attempts by another city because we felt that much of the area would be converted to residential, which we did not want. Ultimately, the HIA decided to annex the entire 230-acre business park to San Carlos. We did this with the assurance from the city that the area would be preserved forever as a business community. Annexation provided us with a measure of protection from unwanted conversion of business properties to residential uses. In 1997, annexation did take place, and with it, 450 businesses changed their address from Belmont to San Carlos. In addition, 250 businesses who already had a San Carlos address, but were unincorporated, annexed as well. So we're talking about a total, excuse me, of 700 businesses, along with all their employees and families that are affected by the zoning in this area. Clearly, the HIA is a resource for jobs in the area. I was somewhat horrified to look at option 2A. When I look at the map, it looks to me like upwards to 40% of the area is earmarked for conversion to residential, if that option were exercised. The HIA does understand the need for housing along the transportation corridor, but that should not include existing business communities. We, by the way, are one of the very few business communities in the country. People are amazed on the governmental side when they see this, and I-
Your two minutes are up, so if you can just wrap up, please, if you have any final remarks.
I'll give them back to you. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council. My name is Carlos Hernandez. I'm the general manager of Delta Star located in the north corner of Industrial Road and Tellerway Road. We have been at this location since 1950s. We're 100% employee-owned and the largest American-owned medium-power transformer manufacturer in the U.S. We provide work to over 250 people and expect to reach 300 within a year. Today, we utilize every inch of our property and cannot lose any land, if anything, we could potentially use more for the future. We're here because it is not clear how our property will be impacted with the north-south alley being proposed. We understand there are many studies pending, but it's a major concern, since the current proposal shows it through our property today. There are many challenges with mixed industrial and residential areas. We all know that if there is new housing in the area, we will have inevitable protests of many residents wanting us to close and move. We are a 24/7 operation, and this plan also needs to consider the larger safety risks, not only for our employees, but the potential citizens and pedestrians in the area. Our larger employee parking lot and truck deliveries of heavy haul material and components is on Tellerway Road. Adding housing in the proposed areas and walkways not only represents a high-traffic concern to everyone, but a huge safety hazard to pedestrians and drivers. We operate three shifts and have multiple vehicles, trucks, and trailers going in and out through the day, including weekends. The equipment we make is heavy haul that requires specialized trucks and many occasions, police escorts from DOT, which as a result forces to partially close one lane on industrial roads several times during the month. We submitted a letter to each of you and the staff that has further details about our concerns. It is our belief that the planning commission would desire more information to be able to make a recommendation. Therefore, a reasonable alternative would be send the package back to the commission for the purpose of that study, or alternatively, the council should take up on further information and impacts before making a decision. We recently had a very productive meeting with the city staff and are committing to them-
Carlos, your time is up, so if you can wrap up, please.
Yeah, so just saying, we had a very productive meeting with city staff, and we're committed to the community and continue to support the efforts.
Thank you, Carlos.
Up next is Derek Hunter, and then you'll be followed by Christopher Cow.
Good evening, city staff. My name is Derek Hunter. I'm here on behalf of Hunter Properties and Bay Area Self-Storage located at 151 Industrial Road. We've been working with city staff and members of planning and economic development, and we're really encouraged by, you know, the amount of outreach that Al and Megan and all their consultants have put into understanding, you know, the future of this area. But that said, we want to come here tonight to get on the record and just note that currently right now, our self-storage facility is in a weird spot and kind of in a purgatory of sorts, as in a legal, or, sorry, legal non-conforming. And, you know, as this new, specific plan comes out, we want to advocate that, you know, our customers that come to our facility, over 60% are small businesses, many of them commuting outside of the Bay Area into the peninsula to operate their business. Additionally, many of our customers are, you know, small family formations, and we've been serving this area for over 20 years, and a lot of these families don't have the space anymore with how expensive with housing, and they use our facility as a way to service those needs. So we just want to make sure that, you know, as this area does urbanize, we understand that, that it is a process of and, and it's not a process of or. You know, a process of or would be, we urbanize and we leave all these old businesses in the past for these better, or for these improved uses like biotech. An and process, which is what we're advocating for, would be to, you know, work with members like us, people that have been serving the community with our small business, and include us in the conversation. You know, we understand that there are community benefits, we understand that this is a negotiation, but we just want to be considered, you know, as part of the process. So, thank you, city staff and city council.
Thank you, Derek.
Christopher Cow, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Mark Lockenmeyer.
Good evening. I appreciate that some of the council members and Megan have somewhat questioned what I'm going to bring up, but I think it's important you hear from a property owner. I own the property at the corner of Old County Road and Brigado Road. All three proposals turn that property into a park paseo green zone. Even if the adjacent property owners decided to sell their property, at least they can sell a property that can be developed. However, our property can only be a park paseo green zone, and who's going to purchase a park, other than maybe the city of San Carlos? So we can't develop the property. There is no market for the sale of the property. These proposals destroy the value of my property, and it discriminates against my property. This is the only property that can't be developed within the whole plan. The moratorium has already limited our ability to expand and improve our business, and these proposals not only impact our ability to improve, but also limit, if not destroy, the hundreds of small businesses that surround us and make up the area immediately, northeast, part of the northeast-specific plan. Also, it is my understanding that there would be an environmental impact report done prior to planning. I don't believe that's been done. I spent 15 years working with the city, the county, and the state resources remediating my property. I'm well aware of all the hazardous materials that are underground throughout that area. As a longstanding business owner, property owner, employer, and taxpayer of San Carlos, I urge that the council not move forward on these plans without major consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Mark Lockenmeyer, and you'll be followed by Dunn Cox.
Hi, I'm Mark Lockenmeyer, current president of the HIA. I work with Howard. Just a couple issues. John, the HIA did a pretty substantial study on the economic impacts of biotech being built in that area, and our big thing is, we want to get into an improvement district. We ran numbers, we had some consultants come in. We think we can get a $250 million bond to improve the whole area from the flooding and other things, infrastructure, maybe eminent domain and things like that. We've looked at the current projects, kind of in the hopper, that are going to be built, and looked at the increased revenue. Keep in mind, these buildings are $1,000 a foot to build. So for instance, right now, Kelly Moore, maybe that tax base is 2.2 million, it goes to 22 million when it gets built. So these are some of the things I think you have to consider and look at, the big picture of that area. Second of all, some of the buildings down there, we're concerned about, there's a lot of multi-tenant buildings, like 20,000 feet with like 10 different tenants. Those are incubators for bigger businesses and local small businesses that people live here, don't have to commute. The residential component really is going to take away most of those buildings, and there's probably about 10 of them, 10 to 15 of those buildings. So I think EDAC, and you have to kind of get together and look at where you're going to rezone residential and minimize the impact of maybe the smaller businesses and the good buildings that house those businesses. The other thing is with the grandfather clause, let's say you have a 20,000-foot building with 10 tenants. If one becomes vacant for six months, does that mean you can never lease it again? Or is it to have to be the whole building on the grandfather clause? does it have to be the whole building on the grandfather clause? These are kind of things that you have to consider when you're looking at doing these rezoning in that area with these small buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Up next is, is it Dan or Dunn Cox?
Dunn.
Dunn. That's enough. You can approach the podium.
I'm Don Cox, property owner at 590 Taylor Way and a 40-year resident of San Carlos. My parents were some of the first folks to develop property in the area that we're discussing tonight. Property that was once flooded marshlands and empty fields, and they purchased this property just a decade or so after World War II. Over the past decade, it appears to me that our city has gotten caught up in a whirlwind of regrowth. In 2022, an imposed moratorium put a stop to future growth in the designated northeast section of San Carlos. Three potential plans were presented to the Planning Commission last week. City council meeting to discuss the options was scheduled for a week later, which is tonight. I'm concerned about the rush. It feels like a rush. This rapid timeline appears to be utilized by San Carlos as a window of opportunity. Please slow down and engage with us prior to making any final decision. The moratorium is in place until next June, full nine months away. It's clear to me that the demands for mandated additional housing are driving this very fast process, and with that said, we are entitled to and deserve a more transparent and inclusive way in which to participate and share our concerns and possible support. I'm asking city council to collaborate with us and to include representation, your representation, at future meetings where our specific concerns and interest will be addressed. This opportunity, specifically for property owners, has not taken place. It is our properties that are facing new laws zoning. The likelihood of breaking up several properties with roads is a perilous and unfortunate option that would negatively impact our property values. We, as responsible owners, have long served our community in numerous ways over many decades. Being forced into a position to challenge eminent domain would not serve the city of good living. Let us slow down and use the available time to work together in a collaborative manner. Perten materials and related data have regularly been difficult to access online. The recently shared three options have been challenging to fully understand.
John, can you wrap it up, please?
Yep. Emails and correspondence from city leaders have not been returned or acknowledged in a timely manner, if at all. This feels very rushed, and we are hoping that you guys slow down and include us in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay. Is there any more comments in person?
I do not have any other slips for in person.
Okay, great. Let's see what we have online.
Okay. Currently, it looks like we have about 12.
Okay.
So first up is William Turner. You'll be followed by Jessica Klein.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is William Turner, and I'm here to represent my family, the Ramos family, who runs the business and owns the property at 675 Taylor Way on the south side of Taylor. A small parcel, a little bit over half an acre that we've owned since 1957. As an architect, I fully understand that zoning needs to flex over time, and I appreciate that many of these ideas would be great on a clean sheet of paper. However, this is not a clean slate. This is a vibrant industrial neighborhood supporting families. I was honestly hoping that planning staff, commissioners, and yourselves would not fall into the same trap of other peninsula cities and continue to eradicate all of the light industrial uses to make way for tech, biotech, and high-density housing, which will destroy any hope of diversity, equity, and inclusivity when it comes to small commercial businesses within the city of good living. With regards to the report, it outlines a number of great improvements with regards to stormwater and flooding, but I also wanted to point out, the first goal of the planning effort is to celebrate the area's industrial legacy. Options 2A and 2B eradicates all of the existing light industrial uses. The second goal notes calibrates the right mix of uses. The incorporation of housing should be viewed at the overall city scale and not just in this quadrant. You know, overall, I just want to say, take a moment, please, and turn around and look at the city seal behind the dais, and look at it carefully. It shows two words and two symbols, both home and industry. On behalf of the Ramos family and other Cowan small businesses, I want to make sure that you are keeping the ability to live and work within the city of San Carlos a reality, the reality which my grandfather built over 50 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, William.
Up next is Jessica Klein. You'll be followed by Sadie Inward. Jessica, you should be able to, there you go. Jessica, we heard you. I see that you're unmuted.
The only way we are going to solve the housing problem is if we deport all of the illegal aliens who are falsely claiming asylum and close our borders. Illegal aliens have become a massive problem in our country and are perpetuated by our-
Okay, I think that's, we're gonna just remove that.
Well, I mean, I think we need to tell them-
The warning?
That we need to tell them that they need to talk to the item, and if they won't talk to the item-
Jessica, we're speaking on the northeast-area-specific plan, so if you'd like to speak with that, on that item, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you.
But if she's not speaking to the item, then you can tell her she can be cut off.
Okay, if you're not speaking on the item, we're gonna go ahead and remove you.
The only way we are going to solve the housing problem is if we-
Okay. We've provided warnings, so we're going to go ahead and remove you. Next up is Sadie Inward. You'll be followed by Debbie Baldacci.
Hello, are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. I would just like to comment, as a member of the public, that I think that the whole entire northeast-area-specific plan is going to be a huge detriment for the middle and lower classes in the community. It's going to take away small family businesses and destroy single-family homes in order to build these giant commie block apartment buildings where they can ramp everyone in altogether of all classes, all races, and all societies, and it's not going to end up working well for the common man just to serve [BLEEP] landowners and landlords in the city. I don't know why they have so much power over the building and construction. It's, they're only 2% of the national population, but they represent 98% of everything else. 96% of the media is owned by [BLEEP] corporations, and now they're taking over housing, and I'm gonna have to live [BLEEP] pod with a bunch of [BLEEP]. This isn't fair.
Can you?
I, I-
Disruptive. I don't know if she can hear, but not-
Sadie, this behavior is very disruptive, and we're gonna give you a warning, and if you continue this, we're gonna remove you from the meeting.
I think-
We legally have to provide a warning before we remove them. So Sadie, I'm gonna unmute you, and if this continues, we will remove you from the meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm just so upset. I'm going to lose my home where I live, I'm gonna lose my community and my neighborhood and [BLEEP].
That's enough. God almighty, where are these people coming from?
Okay, we've removed that person from the meeting. Debbie Baldacci, you're up next.
Thank you, council. I just want to say, I think the meeting was hacked by those two former people. I don't think those were real people. That was a hack. With regard to the comments tonight, I want to support the small business owners that have spoken with regard to their property rights, and I would say that the main focus tonight by city manager and EDAC director was to provide certainty to the market. They kept talking about how this specific plan would provide certainty to the market, but not to the community. This, basically, all of those options that take away your ability, they strip you of your ability to negotiate community benefits on behalf of your constituency. It streamlines the process for developers. It basically will provide ministerial approval. The kind of benefits that the huge billionaire biotech owners have gotten in San Carlos have been given as mitigated negative declaration for environmental review, not environmental impact reports. If you required an environmental impact report, you would have to be presented with an environmentally superior option, which would be lower density and more environmental protections. However, you could negotiate a higher community benefit by allowing them more density. You don't have to take that. But when you give away all of your power for certainty for the market, you're taking away the power of the community who you represent. So please do not adopt 2A and 2B. Preserve the program or preserve the options for small business owners and ensure diversity's maintained in San Carlos so that people can live and work here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. I'm gonna-
Okay.
Greg, you feel we're okay to move on here, or?
Well, I guess this is a new phenomenon with these Zoom bombers, or whatever they're called. Under the law, we do have to provide a warning to someone who is disrupting a meeting, so we're gonna, I'm gonna announce now that we are admonishing the participants who are online to stay on the subject of the item, and if they act, if they use expletives and terms that are not on point and are objectionable to the council, we can terminate them on the call, and, but we will, I'll have to assess each one of them to determine whether or not they're sufficiently disruptive. In my opinion, the two that we did cut off before were sufficiently disruptive because they were distracting from the item at hand, and they used insulting and objectionable and racist terms that we are not conducive to an appropriately-run meeting.
And so can we consider this, the warning, to anyone now, or do we need to go through that process again?
I think we're, I mean, I think what, people are taking advantage of this process, but the law says we have to give disruptive people a warning.
Is this what you're giving now, not considered a warning?
It has to be to the individual who is being disruptive.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Harris Levin, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, council members. My name is Harris Levin, and I'm calling on behalf of Presidio Bay Ventures. As you're aware, Presidio Bay has a significant presence in San Carlos and specifically in the northeast area through our ownership of 642 Cory and our interest in 591 Cory and 500 Brigado. I'd like to begin by saying we appreciate staff's work thus far and the high-level vision of the plan. However, we are concerned about the feasibility of the plan and the unintended consequences of a plan on property values and existing developments, including the developments we have an interest in off Cory and Brigado. In the two minutes I have to address you, I'd like to highlight three of our primary concerns. The first is that the plan places a material burden on private stakeholders by repurposing a considerable amount of privately-owned land and significantly impairing the value of existing sites, which we believe will drastically limit the feasibility of future development and undermine your stated goals. Our second concern is the fact that new green pathways, alleyways, and roads do not take into account parcel lines or existing buildings, which would leave many parcels in a configuration not suitable for development. This could ultimately result in fragmented development or the district is redeveloped in pieces and has green pathways or roads leading to nowhere. Finally, I'd like to also echo comments my colleague Cyrus made at last week's Planning Commission hearing, which is that we ask the city to be less prescriptive as to what uses are required on each individual site. We believe that greater flexibility will be important to make sure development actually occurs. We also encourage you to further explore what Al referenced earlier this evening regarding an incentives program which would reward developers and owners who implement your priorities. In conclusion, our ask is that city council directs staff to engage more thoroughly with all community stakeholders, including developers such as Presidio Bay, to develop a plan that is feasible and will lead to a successful outcome for the northeast area. Thank you.
Thank you, Harris.
Thank you, Harris. Up next is Rick. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name's Rick LaFranchi. I'm part of an ownership group in the northeast. I have significant concerns about the redevelopment trigger that would force a property owner, such as ourselves, to comply with the new zoning. This redevelopment trigger is nebulous at best. It could include proposals as minor as expanding the building footprint to accommodate a growing business. Also, if our business leaves and six months passes, then we would have to comply with the new zoning requirement. Both of these scenarios would have a significant negative impact on our property that was not prompted by a sale to a developer. I ask that the city engage with owners in further collaboration to find a comfortable middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Up next is Jim Addixon. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. We're talking about the building, apartment buildings, right? And zoning laws? All right.
This is the northeast-area-specific plan?
Yeah, about the new zoning laws for apartments and land zoning. So I guess the issue is, like, you know, we can build, you know, thousands and thousands of hotels and build thousands of apartments and places to live for people, but if the border's wide open, we're just letting [BLEEP] come across, then we're not-
This is not the topic that we're talking about.
All right, well-
Thank you.
You should be able to unmute.
Hello, council. Thank you for your time. Rabbi Yogoda here, representing Temple, Mississippi-Pitt, here in the northeast district. Before I begin, I just want to condemn all the anti-Semitic callers and say that hate has no place here. I have a statement here prepared in conjunction with the Anti-Defamation League, basically outlining how this whole northeast plan is entirely [BLEEP]. Sorry, I think I was interrupted. As I was saying, it's Yom Kippur, a holy day, and today marks Khoros.
Henrik, this is not on the subject matter. We're going to have to have to-
If you continue with, if you continue with that, we're going to remove you from the meeting as disruptive and on irrelevant subject matter.
Please don't [BLEEP].
I'm removing you from the meeting.
Krista, how many more speakers do we have?
We have six more.
Can we have a recess?
Yeah, we can take a recess.
All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute- All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess.
Reconvene. I'm ready to adjourn. Okay. Councilmember Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we extend the meeting to 11:30.
I'll second.
Christopher, can you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
And the rest?
Yes. Okay. We are going to try to get through this. There are six speakers left. We are -- I'm going to cut off public comment at that point. I feel like we made notice, and so let's see if we can get through that. And if not, we will readjust.
Okay. Next up is Brian Heckman.
Sounds like they're not there.
Oh, sorry. I just unmuted. I'm Brian Heckman. I'm with 150 Industrial, with the owners of 150 Industrial, the corner of Warry and Industrial. We have an existing 230,000 square foot life sciences project that has been leased to life sciences tenants for 25 years. It sounded like there was a consensus or an idea to keep existing uses. We're concerned that where we are potentially asking our project to change to a PDR use would be an undue burden on our asset. There's a significant amount of existing lab infrastructure, and we'd be concerned that being forced into a lower-end PDR use if our project goes vacant. So our concern is making sure that legal nonconforming means that our life science use would continue to be legal within the existing envelope and would not be lost if the asset goes vacant for a period of time. And we appreciate everybody staying late on this call and going through this.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Next up is Leonard Frank.
Yes. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Oh, sorry there. Didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm up in the upper, upper northeast side there, and I run a small business, Sneed's Feed and Seed. I provide pet food and bird seed for locals out in the area. And I've been operating for about five years, and I'm extremely worried that, what is it, 2A, 2B, that act there is going to really, during the construction, affect locals being able to access my business. And as a result of that, you know, I'm going to have to undergo hardship, hardship not seen before, in my family for two generations, since my grandfather [BLEEP]. And, you know.
Bird seed. Okay.
Why was I cut off? I was condemning [BLEEP] there earlier. I don't think that's an inappropriate thing to say. Correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, or should I just not mention the Zoom bombings we've been getting?
You can go ahead.
All right. No, I just want to say I haven't heard anything that terrible since the [BLEEP].
Okay.
We're going to be removing you from the meeting. We have three more. Three more. Robert J. Hanson. Robert J. Hanson.
They don't start. Just turn it off. He's done. He's up there. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
First of all, I just want to apologize for those previous callers. You know, it's terrible that people are calling in, talking about [BLEEP].
This is a warning.
Yeah, I was just saying how [BLEEP].
Two more.
Okay.
George Lincoln Rockwell.
Anything but.
What? Is it?
Okay. Sounds like they're not there.
Can you hear me?
Okay, you can cut that one off. I mean, we'll just do this. Okay, sounds like she didn't come on. Did she unmute?
She unneeded.
I'm here. Guys are so quick to shut up.
Okay. That's not Judy Schreier. Okay.
Being disruptive.
Hello, can you hear me? You can't cut my call.
We're getting a bunch of other hands, but we've already set, we've met the six people that we've allowed.
We have other items, business to conduct tonight, and so I want to let the council have an opportunity to talk about this item and give direction to staff.
Okay. All right. Let's move to council comments at this point. All right. Let's start with Councilmember Venkatesh. Before you start, let me just, two things. One, I just want to apologize to everyone here for the, what we had to go through. It is certainly inappropriate, and no one here obviously condones that, and we will hopefully never have to deal with that again. And let me ask now, Megan, what specifically, what would be most productive for you to hear from us?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I think what we would like to hear is what you like. What do you think would work well? What should we bring forward? And what things would you like us to think about more, think about in more detail, tweak, and revise as we move forward? Is that?
Thank you. All right. We'll start with Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, that was hard to deal with. It's 2023, and we're still dealing with it, so I apologize. I would like to say, option, there's option A, option B, option C, or 2A or 2B, and I'm not ready to make a decision on any of those. What I would like is option D, which is more economic impact study, more community input, and collaboration with small business stakeholders.
Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Still gathering my thoughts here. Excuse me. Anyway, moving forward, you were asking, these are just some general impressions on my part. I get the suggestion that we ought to think about more housing over there, or adding housing. I'm not absolutely committed to it. If we're going to do, if we're going to consider housing, it seemed to me that maybe it ought to surround the housing that is there, and that would be sort of a little bit of option 2A and a little bit of option 2B. But again, I'm personally not committed to more housing there. I think we also need to be, we need to be careful about how we think about new connections, new roads, new paseos, that sort of thing. There, I mean, I've heard it loud and clear, and I have a real concern there among business owners. If we're going to go down that path, we really have to think about that a different way. That's, I really don't even know how to, how to think about that. I think those are my two main things. I had a couple of others, but my thought pattern has been disrupted sufficiently that I'm not going to spend time trying to think about them. Maybe after the others talk, I think about them, I'll bring them back up.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Vice Mayor Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, obviously, a lot to think about. It's a lot of ideas. It's a lot of impact. It's a lot of the future here. Obviously, our northeast area is a very vibrant, important part of San Carlos. It, you know, these are just kind of facts that have occurred to me. You know, we need the businesses there. We need the services they provide. But it's also a largely unplanned zone, large planned area with, you know, poor infrastructure. It floods. It really was never properly planned. It's a terrific location, and change is happening there whether we want it or not, whether we plan for it or not. You know, life sciences discovered San Carlos, and the state is requiring us to dramatically plan for dramatic new housing. So that change is coming, you know. So how do we want to get out in front of that as a city? And, you know, I think our staff is making a big effort here, trying to engage resources, trying to engage the community, trying to figure out, you know, what can we do here that, you know, will actually shepherd in this future? So, you know, I appreciate the planning that has happened here. You know, I will say I do support housing in this area. I think we need to be thoughtful about that. Obviously, a transition to our current east side neighborhood is important. The housing can provide a buffer of sorts, but mostly it serves our, it's been a top goal of our city for years. We're in the midst of a housing crisis. We need more housing. We need to continue to plan for more housing, especially as we plan for all these new jobs that are clearly coming to town. So I do support an option two. But it was, I really didn't like that, you know, the PVR zoning, in my view, is really the key to this planning. This is how we're going to plan for the future while bringing our existing light industrial users along with us, our, you know, the shops, the smaller businesses, the family-owned businesses. I think it's important we bring them along. And so, you know, the more I heard about the PDR zoning, the more I saw that as a real opportunity, and I think that's important. So I support an option two, but it needs to have PDR zoning involved. That's my specific input. Whether it's option 2A or 2B, I don't know. I don't know really how much. I appreciated the numbers I heard. That does sound like a lot of housing. I, you know, I don't know. How do we know how much housing we're going to need in the future? But I guess would like to see some kind of bit more formal study of that, like where do we think we will be in the 2030s on housing? How many more jobs will come to this area? I think expecting this area to at least house the new jobs it's attracting might be a reasonable measure of how much housing we need in this area. I'm not sure we need to ask this area to offset our need for housing in the other part of the east side, since we didn't ask that area to provide any housing. So that's, that's, I want to, you know, I have more thinking, and I think we all have more analysis to do on how much housing. As far as the new roads, you know, I appreciate the bold thinking, you know, that connections, transportation, our infrastructure like that, that's another top. We only have six top goals as a city. That's a second of them. So when you just look at this area and all the dead ends and the way things don't flow, I mean, I, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't seem to be on the right set of history. I do want us to be thoughtful, you know, having a building get completely encompassed by a paseo, so, you know, it's a valid point. Can they sell that building under new zoning like that? I don't know. Or maybe we have to buy it at that point. I don't know. So if there is a better way to make use of the routes that are available there, I think we really do need to take a hard look at that. But providing those connections and that flow, that is a top goal of ours, and it's important. And I would argue the, a new activated district in this area is also services a number of our top goals as a city, because when you add jobs and there is no housing or no amenities for those people, then they all have to get in their car to do everything, and that impacts traffic and infrastructure elsewhere in the city, parking elsewhere in the city. And it's also, you know, works, transfer, cars, transportation's our biggest source of air pollution, actually. So the more we can let people walk and find things, the more we're servicing that, which is another one of our top goals. That said, I think we just need to be thoughtful here, like grandfathering, I think, needs to be very flexible and very thoughtful. Obviously, no matter what we do here, I think what we're trying to do is provide for the planning when significant new development comes. That's, that's how I'm thinking about it. And that can take, it might, you know, it might be 40 years before enough turnover happens that we're really seeing this plan. And I think that's okay. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is big, long-term, far into the future planning. And if it takes 30 years, it takes 30 years. So I don't think we need to be heavy-handed here. I think it's fine for a, you know, existing use to, obviously, keep using the building the way it's been used, but they should be able to make reasonable improvements to that building, too. Not just remodel the bathroom, but if they need to, I don't know, if they've got room in their parking lot and they want to build something there, I think that's okay, too. But if they're going to sell wholesale to a developer, I think that's when this planning kicks in. That's, that's how I think about it. And then I think we could also help our existing users understand that, you know, this planning, done right, should add a lot of value to most of the land over there. It certainly has in other areas, and anything we can do to study or formalize or explain that better, I think, is worthwhile. That's what I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Dugan. Councilmember McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the members of the public who are here tonight for staying so long with us. I really appreciated the comments. I spent time today driving around the northeast area and admiring all of the small businesses, a lot of trades businesses, home maintenance, auto servicing. I feel your energy around preserving your family businesses that have been in your businesses, been in your families for decades and generations, and that, I don't think that's lost on any of us up here. And that's why we do want to be very thoughtful with this process and why we put a moratorium in this area so that we could take a pause before the big developers came and gobbled up all of the land. We want to be thoughtful in how we make this kind of last area of San Carlos that still needs significant improvements with flooding and drainage and stormwater to, so that we can be thoughtful and really reach out to our community. So I wanted to thank you for that. I agree with the vice mayor. I do think we need to be very thoughtful around businesses if they want to expand when they become legal nonconforming uses, so looking for some flexibility and creative ideas there. I heard Christopher's comments tonight loud and clear about the community amenity, and I think that we, I think that, you know, putting it in the area was nice. It's a marker, but I think that created some angst in the community. And I think this came up in our subcommittee meeting that the mayor and I sit on for economic development, where we asked, could we see an overlay of Burton Park in the area? Like, what kind of acreage are we talking about for needing a park? And what would that look like? Or what kind of acreage would we need for an aquatic center that is really bubbling to the top in our community? And, you know, I'm not sure when, when we say that this, you know, this document is legally binding, how do we work in a large community amenity, especially for putting in housing and, you know, activated uses and retail? I don't know, but I'm looking for kind of some guidance on that. I'm also looking for, I mentioned an overlay map of like a park. I'd also like to see an overlay map of the properties where environmental cleanup is targeted by the EPA and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'd like to see an inventory list of properties that do have significantly polluted land and groundwater. I think that will impact the housing conversation. The mayor and I met with the EPA and with staff last year, and I know that there's different rules that come into play when you're talking about sensitive receptors and housing. So I think that we need, I just want to make sure we're going into this process with our eyes wide open on what's realistic and what can be done. Like I said to the city attorney earlier, I don't want to go down a path where we find that it's not really going to work out after all. I would also like to see a map of San Carlos's other areas where small industrial businesses can locate. We do have our industrial arts area that is also targeted for small businesses, and I'm interested in looking at other pockets of places in San Carlos where we do have that zoning already there. I know that there's auto repair shops over there as well, so looking at a holistic view. And I did appreciate the vice mayor's comments about PDR zoning. I think that that, we should probably take a good look at that, too. We do have a lot of large commercial developments coming into our east side vision plan area. So, you know, if we can carve out some space for the smaller businesses and the PDR zoning, I think that would be worthwhile to take a look at. Housing is being mandated by the state, and I think, as was said earlier, no area should be left out of planning for housing. We've looked at El Camino. We have a lot of areas where multifamily housing is going, and so I do support some kind of housing in this area. So like what Councilmember Venkatesh said, I'm not really, I'm not there yet with choosing a specific plan. I'd like to see actually other plans brought forward, kind of incorporating the feedback from tonight. I'm, I'm okay with, you know, taking our time and making sure that we're being realistic. I also want to make sure that we're being transparent and inclusive of the community and making sure that people are feeling like they're getting the meetings that they need to be heard on these issues. And I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McDowell. I think I see Councilmember Collins' hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to finish up. I was glad to hear some of the comments. I agree mostly with Sarah and John about the need to go back and do a little bit more planning. The housing issue, I think it's been said that we have enough room in this city to handle all of the housing, state housing mandates without that area. That, to me, that's kind of gravy. If it comes to that, then I think we need to carefully plan it. The one thing I did want to mention, though, is that, and the one thing that's most important to me, is that we need to find a way to incorporate a public amenity for, you know, future developers I would hope would either contribute or dedicate the land to the city. As Sarah said, you know, having a community center, a pool, which everybody knows is probably my number-one thing, is, I think, not only important to me, but it's important to the community. Comes up in every single survey that ever gets done. And it is something that I don't think we should give up on, even if it, and I doubt that this is going to happen, but if, even if we were to go to option one, which doesn't have any housing, and I don't think that's going to happen, we have to find a way to create that public amenity. I don't know how we do it. I'm looking to staff to come up with some creative ways that we can make sure that no matter what option we choose, we don't lose that valuable thing that's going to, you know, be the jewel, in my opinion, of the area. So that was the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, oh, thank you, Councilmember Collins. All right. Let me see what I have to add here. I guess I would, I am keen to kind of see what an economic study looks like, and I think, I think the vice mayor had mentioned earlier, if there could be a couple case studies around that, I think that would be interesting to kind of get a sense for, you know, one or two properties and get an option for that. I do want to make sure we're sort of being mindful of the existing businesses and what we can do around preservation for light industrial, and knowing that things are going to turn over, potentially regardless. And I will say, on the creek setback that came up, while I am a big proponent of the creek setback, I do think 50 feet does kind of create a pretty large impact to those businesses over there. I think I could be open to looking at what, when Shoreline proposed, of 35 feet, but I do think we want to be mindful of and what we can do around flooding and stormwater, but I do think that's, could be kind of excessive to manage with those properties. And then I think on the, I get that the road is kind of a challenging option, and I'm, you know, I'm, I think it's going to be difficult to do. It's good to be aspirational. I sort of want to keep thinking over that a little bit more, but I also want to look at other areas and other options where I'm intrigued, what, while I, you know, we've got mandates, we're going to have more mandates eight years from now on housing, so my, you know, we, I think we need to look at some sort of housing in that area. I'm kind of intrigued with what one of the planning commissioners had, to kind of look at something like that, which is sort of a little bit of a scaled-down version of it. I think having that as a third option for housing would be, would be interesting, and I also wonder if that area sort of on industrial by Holly could also serve a purpose of, you know, having that down first-story sort of retail and housing above it. And maybe we can be, you know, there may be some other options around there versus sort of right in the center to that. But I also get housing sort of on Old County is closer to transit and potentially, you know, might be helpful on that. I'm just concerned that if we were to take all that for housing, we're really impacting the economic base and the business base and the industrial base that we have in the northeast area. And I don't know that I want to go that far in terms of the amount of housing that's there, because it is, you know, from an economic growth standpoint, from a job standpoint, we have to find the right balance around that. So those are my thoughts. I don't see any, oh, no, I don't see any more comments. Megan, do you feel like you have enough info from us? Do you need more, is there any specific items that you need to get information from?
Yes, this has been very helpful. Thank you all. Yes, thank you. We will put the brain team together and come back with some more thoughts. Yeah, thank you.
All right. And I appreciate everyone being here, and we look forward to further outreach with all of you as this process unfolds and moves forward. So I really appreciate the comments and staying here for the late hour. Going to move on. It's hot in here, so. We're going to move on to the next item, which is going to be new business. Okay. And then is there, do we feel like we need to move anything around within this process? We feel, Jeff, is there any reason to, I know the rates are sort of one that we need to kind of deal with sooner than later, but I just want to be mindful of.
The only item that isn't time-sensitive for one reason or another is item 10A.
Okay.
But it's also anticipated to be a fairly short item, so.
Okay.
We have a person.
Oh, all right. We will, we will do 10A. All right, let's move on to 10A. Consideration of adopting a resolution finding that hiking and pedestrian use of the one-foot-wide non-access strip and easement at the end of Los Vientos Way dedicated to and accepted by the City of San Carlos is consistent with the public use granted. Okay, Andrea.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Andrea Martasich, Assistant Community Development Director. This evening, I'm going to be presenting a resolution for your consideration to affirm a hiking pedestrian use of a one-foot-wide non-access strip at Los Vientos Way. The next two slides list general plans and policies and actions, which are also outlined in your staff report. As you're aware, the general plan serves as a blueprint for the city's long-term vision for the future. And by following these guidelines, as well as some other policies, we're providing a bit of a background about why we're looking into trail connections at this time. So I just wanted to provide that brief background for this, as well as also remind you of the 2023 Council Strategic Plan, where council asked that the city explore new recreational opportunities by completing an assessment of parks, open space, and other facilities. And part of that is assessing new opportunities to implement trails, including new trails as well as possible connection points. So I just wanted to provide that background to talk about why we're bringing forward this item this evening. As part of these As part of these guiding principles and documents, staff has been analyzing possible trail construction as well as possible locations for connections. Tonight, the council is focusing on one access point. It's at the end of Los Vientos Way, and you can see it on the screen on the left side and outlined in the red box area near 280. Zooming in on that area, you can see the end of Los Vientos. The road dead-ends into the, the open space to the left. It's immediately adjacent to regional open space, specifically Pulgas Ridge, which is managed and owned by Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. Towards the left of the screen, you can also see the extent of the dusky-footed Wood Rat Trail, and it comes about, within about 100 yards of the end of Los Vientos. This is a picture of what it looks like now. As you can see, there is a gate at the end of Los Vientos Way. Right in front of that gate is a one-foot non-access strip, which is the subject of the resolution this evening. The reason for this resolution is because the city has spoken with MidPen, who indicated that the city would need to affirm pedestrian access over this existing non-access strip prior to any decision by MidPen to open this gate. And I will discuss the specifics of that easement in the next slide. I did want to reiterate, though, that if council were to adopt this resolution this evening, that would not guarantee that the gate would be open. That decision is entirely up to MidPen. So in 1979, this non-access strip was created as part of a subdivision and parcel map. You can see the access strip outlined in the red cloud at the bottom of the screen. The parcel map also dedicated parcel C, which is directly above the parcel D, and that is Los Vientos Way. At the time, the property located immediately to the west of this easement, which is on the, below the easement, was a private property. And so this non-access strip would prohibit the extension of any road into that private property. Zooming in on that portion of the map, you can see both the dedication of parcel C and D for public use and parcel D again being that one-foot access strip in front of the In 1983, that private property was acquired by Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, and they now own the gate and the land, and as I mentioned before, are responsible for whether that gate is opened in the future. This is another view looking at the open space, looking at the property from 280. Again, you can see the end of Los Vientos Way coming into, to the edge of the, the open space. This location was identified as a top priority in terms of connections as part of the San Carlos Potential Trails Connection Plan, which was revised in 2011, as it eases access between a future Devonshire Canyon Trail System and Pulgas Ridge open space. In 1986, the Los Vientos subdivision carried forth this one-foot easement and continued to refer to it as a public use on the map itself, and the council accepted dedications for this use in 1986. Access to the preserve at the end of Los Vientos, again shown with a red arrow, has been through a gate, first by the former property owner and then by Mid Peninsula. Even though MidPen has restricted public access through the, the gate over the years, San Carlos has never interpreted the easement to prevent access by the employees of MidPen or by extension, potential recreational users of district lands should MidPen open the gate for access. MidPen has confirmed that apart from the possible opening of the gate and trail access, there are no additional facility improvements planned. The entirety of the Pulgas Ridge Open Space Preserve is dedicated to open space purposes, and no future roads would be planned in this area. I did want to mention about some, some history with the site. In 2010, Mid Peninsula held a meeting onsite with a few city council members as well as neighbors in the area. Thirteen people expressed concerns at the time, and those included traffic, parking, illegal activities, dog waste, fire danger, and noise, and 11 people expressed support. No further action was taken at the time after that meeting. And then fast-forwarding to today, I did want to mention that although this is not a public hearing, staff did do a courtesy notice to owners of properties on both Los Vientos and Best Court, all of which have been included in the record. And I do know we have some neighbors this evening who would like to speak as well. And then finally, I wanted to call attention to a neighboring subdivision. This is also in your staff report. That was recorded four years earlier than the 1979 map for Los Vientos. In this case, an identical non-access strip, one foot wide, was located where Hallmark Drive meets Crestview Drive, and you can see in the picture above that although vehicular access is not permitted, there is through pedestrian access. And then just to summarize, again, if council does choose to adopt this resolution, this would not open access at the gate. That decision is up to Mid Peninsula, as well as any analysis that goes along with that. However, if the action is taken, the city does have a breadth of experience with similar access points to trails throughout the city that are located both next to single-family districts and open space, and does not anticipate any significant differences with this one. And with that, I'm available for questions, and we also have Greg Rubens, our city attorney, and A.B. Newby, our Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Are there any, Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Andrea. That was a nice, brief presentation. Appreciate it. I'm curious, the staff report is fine, but I found really interesting is in figure two, this close-up of non-access easement and dedication language. This Robert Gaul, he, I guess he, did he own parcels C and D? Is that right?
I believe the whole area. So, so the way these parcel maps are developed, we start with the big land that's, you know, hundreds of acres, and they get progressively smaller.
Right.
So my understanding is with this map, he owned all parcels A through D on here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because he says in here, I thought it was quite interesting, I won't read the whole thing, but the key line that kind of jumped out at me was, "And I do hereby dedicate for the public use to the city of San Carlos all of parcel C for right-of-way purposes and all of parcel D being a one-foot-wide non-access strip, as said parcels are shown on said map and within said subdivision. I also hereby dedicate for public use to the city of San Carlos easement shown as PUE." So it sounds like his original intention was to have this connection? Is that a fair statement?
I think the original intention was to dedicate it to the city, but also with the understanding that there was concern about the city continuing Los Vientos to a new development. So prior to, to ownership by Mid Peninsula, it was privately owned, so either a road to new development or somehow connecting to 280, I think there was concern with that. So this easement was given to the city, but with the assumption that it cannot be used for, for vehicular access.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's, that's really the only question I have for the moment. I may have one or two later, but that was the key thing for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Collins. Vice Mayor Dugan is next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Andrea. Appreciate it. The, yeah, trail connections, you know, strikes me as an additional amenity for everyone in that neighborhood and the rest of the city, but I appreciate, I guess we studied this before and we heard, you know, a list of concerns, the traffic, parking, illegal activities, dog waste, fire danger, and noise. Seems like a connection like this is pretty similar to what, you know, the entrances we might have to Big Canyon Park or Eden Park. Is that how we're thinking about it? This would be similar to that?
Yes. Amy can speak to it more if you'd like more detail, but yes.
So those, that list of concerns that, that were stated, do we see any such activity like that that raises concern in our entrances to Big Canyon or Eden Park?
Good evening, Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. We don't see those concerns at our other trailhead entrances to our open space parks.
Okay, and so do we expect to see any, do we have any concerns about that at, at this entrance if we open it up?
At this time, we do not.
Okay.
And we spoke with Captain Mark Myers earlier, and he also shared that he did not have any concerns.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, so this is public land owned by Peninsula or whatever?
So the, the one-foot non-access strip is dedicated to the city.
Okay.
The gate and all the land behind it is owed by, by Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I had a couple of questions for you, Andrea. In terms of the, the gate itself, understanding that's MidPen, and I don't, I guess one thing I would want to, obviously, we want to ensure that if we were to move forward with permitting this and MidPen moves forward, that we have some sort of way to kind of control that it is, because I, I mean, assuming like over there, my understanding of Pulgas Ridge, you can't have, you know, bikes or e-bikes or any of that kind of stuff, and how do we, sort of, can we, would we be working with MidPen to potentially ensure that it was for pedestrian use only for hikers?
I can start that, and then if I miss anything, Amy can, can join in. Based on initial conversations, yes, we would want to have some, some minimal signage for that. And we would also want to look at other concerns, so we'd want to have, you know, waste receptacles there, dog waste bags. The city could, could include that as part of its pickup with other parks, so it's not anything that MidPen would have to do as part of their pickup. And then we also talked about, you know, it would, patrols would increase in the area, too, from rangers if that was opened as well, as well as police.
And I'm, I'm also just wondering sort of with the, I mean, there's the gate there that I assume MidPen would, potentially could use for, if they needed it, for emergency or some other kind of maintenance or specific things, if that was the case, but assuming we could build something that could be built that could be only for, you know, I'm just imagining like a turnstile that, you know, you wouldn't be able to bring a bike through or something like that, that could sort of limit it to, you know, hikers or something like that. I guess you'd want to be able to let someone with a stroller maybe come through, but I'm just sort of curious about that.
We would be working with MidPen on, on those issues because it's, because it's MidPen's property, they're going to be controlling the access.
Yes.
But I mean, those are things we can talk with them about.
Okay. And in terms of parking over there, I know there's park, street parking there, you know, guessing sort of we could do some, something around parking if there was sort of around with Best Court and other things, so we're not sort of blocking access and people can sort of get in and out of there pretty regularly if we wanted to sort of move maybe red stripe a certain amount over there. I don't remember what's up there. I haven't been up there in a little bit. I mean, I know the area, but not the, sort of, how that parking is configured.
So there is parking both on Crestview as well as Los Vientos. I think the, the strategy would be to monitor and see what needed to be done, so not go in, you know, too hard until we see if there's concerns, what happens, and how we can address those. Definitely things like maybe cleaning up some of the brush along the north side, so that parking's a little bit easier, things like that, but definitely continuously, continuously monitoring and addressing anything that comes up.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, did you have another question? Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Guess we will move to public comment. Do we have a public comment in here? Let's do that first.
Yes, we do have two in-person speakers. Allison Stanton.
Great, thank you all so much. We're still here, about four and a half hours in, and we appreciate the time and consideration. I've been very impressed. I'm Allison Stanton. I am one of the homeowners directly adjacent to the gate and have lived there for the last four years, so I'm happy to provide you with many details and specifics about that area. I would first refer the council to a six-page letter that myself and at least 13 other residents, not just habitants of the road, but also citizens of San Carlos, submitted earlier today. It does include up-to-date photographs that do show, for example, the Bay Area drainage that is right by this one-foot easement that is very important, that would drain directly to the bay. Three main points that I wanted to raise for this council. I've been impressed with all of the due diligence that we've seen and the study that has happened, and notice that normally occurs for the committee. None of that happens here. We received a letter about five days ago. We saw the packet about two days ago. We are a very engaged community. We have been in the past, but no studies are referenced in the packet. If you look at our letter, we specifically say and show that those assumptions and those and anticipations are not correct. You will hear from one of my colleagues tonight that has direct experience with the increase of crime that we have seen in that area, and as a result, there is a lot of risk to this individual area. There is not a direct analogy between the entryways of Big Canyon and Eden. Those are off of main streets. They're off of Crestview. They are off of Britton. This is an entryway that would be off of a secluded cul-de-sac non-through street. So there is no analogy here that can be made to those entry points. Additionally, the Hallmark example is also not analogous or dispositive because it is connecting two existing streets, which is not what we have here. We have a cul-de-sac dead-end road that would be connected to a trail that would require some improvements and would require, in fact, work to be done. I definitely encourage you to look at our letter that goes through this, and because of the lack of notice and because of the lack of process, we are deeply urging you all not to move forward before there can be considerations because of the impact that it will not just have on us, but obviously others in the community, not just in the immediate area. We fully support open spaces and hiking and seeing all the great birds and animals, but there has to be a consideration as to whether or not this is the right access point. In our packet, we included photographs of the current trailhead and all of the infrastructure and the parking and the access that happens there. None of that exists in this space. It is a narrow, dead-end road. We will not have any capability to absorb that type of traffic, even if it is pedestrian. They will drive there, and as a result, I personally have already witnessed in that area drug deals happening, illegal dumping happening, fire risk happening, and as a result, we have called the police several times. We have had to ourselves, as neighbors, police that area because we have young children, and we have not had enough time to be able to make sure that there's a fulsome consideration. So with that, I really encourage you all not to rush before we've done all this sort of glorious partnerships.
Allison, you need to wrap up.
Yes, you may. This is why I left DC. I left to come to a place that has open spaces and has a great way for us all to be as a community. This process has not been what I would hope we would do together as a community to consider what we need to do going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Allison.
Priyanka Parik.
Thank you for being patient and continuing this meeting in spite of all the disturbances. My name is Priyanka Parik, and I am a resident of Los Vientos Way. On September 15th, just over a week ago, we had a break-in into our home while we were home with our two young children. They invaded our home by breaking our patio glass door. We are still shaken by this incident. It was totally unexpected, especially in a quiet and safe city like San Carlos. We are very concerned about any actions that the city would take that would increase, that would cause us or and our neighbors additional security concerns. We strongly urge you to consider rejecting this proposal as we feel that this has not been given enough thought and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Priyanka. And I am sorry for what happened to you and your family.
So there are no more in-person speakers, and we'll go ahead and move to Zoom. Through the mayor, did you want to go ahead and cap?
Sorry. Yeah, Crystal, I, given that we've had disruptions, I did want to designate you sort of to be able to mute if we need to and be able to warn somebody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, first up is Jonathan Stanton. You'll be followed by Debbie Beldachi.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Rack and the city council. My name is Jonathan Stanton, and I moved to San Carlos in 2019. I currently own a house on Best Court near the Loft Gate to Pulgas Preserve. One of the reasons we chose the city for our home is the abundant parks and open space preserves, as well as the excellent schools. We found the existing access to the parks very effective and spent a lot of time with them. Given our proximity to the preserve, we've also formed a good relationship with the preserve rangers and staff. We've discussed in person their fire prevention, ecology work, and enforcement and rescue work over the last four years. I was quite surprised to learn with I was quite surprised to learn with only a few days' notice about the city action to change an existing setup for the preserve access, which has worked well since 1984, and has resulted in extensive and active usage of the preserve even without the Los Vientos gate open. I would suggest that any consideration to change this access requires more extensive study and investigation of the actual impacts and the benefits for the city and the neighborhood. These impacts should be considered by the city in their analysis and not only by MidPenn, as a lot of the impacts would be on city residents directly. My consideration of this proposal raised immediate questions about parking, emergency access, security, and the overall impact of changing a quiet residential cul-de-sac into a public access point. Just a few houses away from the gate, there was a break-in only a few weeks ago, where Priya just talked about, I'll repeat it. This disturbed the whole neighborhood. The police actually advised us actually after the break-in that early to mid-evening was a high-risk kind of home robbery. The locked gate and fences currently make access to the rear of the houses near the preserve very difficult for anyone attempting to get in. However, if the gate was left open at night, which seems to be the implication of this proposal, that would bypass these protections and increase the risk for this isolated area. I have another, a number of other concerns, which were detailed in written submissions to the council from residents in nearby neighborhoods. I just want to point out that in a few days that we had noticed, about three-quarters of all of the residents and neighbors around Los Vientos Way signed onto the letter opposing opening the gate. So I strongly request the council to vote to not approve the resolution at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Up next is Debbie Beldachi, and you'll be followed by Sumit Murra.
Thank you, council. I just want to join the residents on that street in saying that safety and fire prevention should be a priority. We live on a cul-de-sac on Carmelita, and we, too, were faced with the prospect of a pedestrian pass, path that would have been added at the end of the street. And we really appreciate that council, after considering it, did not agree to that because there's insufficient parking on a cul-de-sac. You're sort of a victim to people that can come in there and get out, and you can't. And we recently had our neighbors, our next-door neighbor's house was broken into not once, but twice, and they live in a relatively new house. Bikes were taken, a bike was taken from their garage, and it was just a very upsetting experience. And so to invite the public to go up onto another dead-end street in an area that's remote, and it would take the police a while to respond to them because they're not in as a convenient location as on the lower part of San Carlos, I don't think it's worth jeopardizing their safety by having traffic go up there. In addition, if you look at the pictures, that seems like a very high-fire area. People will want to go up there and walk and smoke. That's another thing we've seen around here, people going and accessing the creek in the middle of the night and smoking and leaving vaping products. So I really hope you will consider not allowing this to happen for that particular street, for not only their safety, but fire safety for all of San Carlos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay. Sumit Murra, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Andy K.
I thank you all for staying up this late and listening to us. I just want to say I'm a neighbor in the Los Vientos neighborhood, and I was just really surprised to find out my property is about, about 400, 500 feet from this exact gate on Sudan Lane. I did not receive a notice. However, my property is, you know, obviously fairly close to the gate, and I did find out about this through our neighbors here who were generous enough, you know, to let me know about this happening. What shocks me is this, you know, that not enough notice was provided to us residents to be able to do any sort of thinking and planning. However, we were able to come together and obviously put together our objections and our concerns to the city council to consider. I do think there's more diligence that needs to happen to be able to sort of think through, are we really providing any additional value to the residents? Because, you know, today, if you look at the Pulgas Ridge Reserve, there are at least two big parking lots with plenty of parking and access available to that trail, both from, you know, bottom of Crestview and Edgewood and right off 280. So certainly, you know, adding one more gate, but certainly a gate, you know, that has a street that's about, I would say, 25 to 30 feet wide isn't really a parking lot. Certainly, I echo the sentiments and the comments that all my neighbors made about, you know, the safety and the, and the fire hazards that exist up there. And I am deeply concerned that, you know, this was obviously brought up over 13 years ago and was obviously closed for some reason, and it is back on the docket. So I strongly urge the city council to, you know, really think through this, and are they really creating that new value while putting the residents in that neighborhood in danger? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sumit.
Andy Klein, you're up next. I'm sorry, Andy K.
Yeah, it's Andy Klein. Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rack and City Council, and thank you for staying up so late. Been a rough night. I just want to obviously voice my support in favor of, I think it's reaffirming the one-foot easement to opening it up. I know this will not result in opening the gate, but hopefully this is a step towards that direction with MidPenn Open Space District. I live about, I'm down the street from this closure, and the other locations where you can enter the Pulgas Ridge are very far away, and they're all the way across town. Opening this gate will allow a lot of us in our neighborhood to have more access to recreation. And with the city council looking at expanding housing and increasing the population of the city, we need to look at expanding things like parks and recreation. And I understand the concerns of the neighbors. Having this in their backyard is not an easy thing. I have openly spoken in favor of the city council looking at building a park about 45 feet from my home. So I do understand that people don't want these things in their backyards, but any chance we get to expand parks or recreation in San Carlos, we should take it. There's also been a lot of talk about how none of the other entrances to trails are like Los Vientos. I would advise that you look at Loma Road, which is towards the top of Eaton Park, and it's one of the ways to access Eaton Park. I believe it also ends in a cul-de-sac and has access in between two homes to get to the top of Eaton Park. It's very similar to Los Vientos, and I don't think they've had an increase of crime or an increase of smoking or all the other things that have been brought up. At the end of the day, I think we need more rec in San Carlos and more parks and more trails. So this is a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Next up is a caller with a phone number ending in 232. I don't see that you are unmuting, so we'll move on to the next person. Kay Molinari.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council and mayor. As a resident who enjoys our parks and our open space and who lives near a highly-used public park and along very narrow streets, I am supportive of increasing access to our open spaces, but at the engagement and involvement of our citizens, I just really encourage you to involve those stakeholders, the city, the staff, the neighbors, and MidPenn, so that we can create an agreed-upon entrance, if that is what's deemed necessary at this location. I am concerned that neighbors only had a few days to engage with city staff on this, and I'd really like us to be, come together and build community with our neighbors and engage them as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Crystal, how many more speakers do we have?
We have two left.
Okay. And then let's, we'll, can I announce that that will be the last speakers for this topic?
Yes.
Okay, these will be the last two speakers.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion to extend the meeting?
Sure, let's do that first.
All right. I'll move that we extend it to midnight.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Rack?
Yes. Okay. So, all right, Crystal, let's go through the last two.
Charlene Edinburgh, you're up next, and the last speaker will be Ryan Rissuta.
Let's see, am I up?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Having internet issues here. I'm one of the local residents who attended the 2010 meeting where city council members and local neighbors came and met actually near that site of Los Vientos and Crestview. And we pointed out exactly how tiny and narrow that street is and secluded. We have had issues with people leaving smoking products and so forth in the area of Vista Park and North Crestview Park. And so this is, as one of the people involved with trying to keep those safe, the folks on Los Vientos have a lot of support from all your neighbors. We would like to not have this opening pursued. So at least one person from the 2010 meeting is here tonight, and I've not changed my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. Okay, we have one more speaker?
Yes, and the last speaker is Ryan Rissuta.
Okay.
You should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I'm actually in Bucharest, Romania, and I need to get to work, so I'll keep this pretty brief. I wrote the council a detailed letter stating my opposition and concerns, and I hope everyone got a chance to read that and consider that. I'm, you know, I don't want to pile on here, but I am a residence of Las, resident of Los Vientos, and my main concern is the lack of notice and the lack of due diligence that was provided to the community. I received this letter on Thursday, and I literally had less than two business days to respond. But I think you can see that we have a strong community within Los Vientos and Best Court. The neighbors found a way to gather and discuss concerns, and I'd really like you to consider opposing this measure. I understand, I love parks, I love trail space, but I think there is a rush to judgment here, and I urge the council to reject this resolution. And please allow time for the residents and the city to work together on a solution rather than rushing in and opening the gate without regard to the residents' concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. All right, sounds like that's all the speakers. All right, do any of my colleagues have, and I thank you to everyone who spoke, and I did get all the letters. We received a number of letters on this topic, and so I appreciate all the comments on that, both from residents and, both from neighbors up there and residents, and, you know, have heard many different, both concerns and also support for more open space access. So I appreciate all that, and thank you. All right, council member McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, actually, that was sparked by someone at the public comment. What happens if we work with MidPenn and open the gate, and then we find that it's not working, it's too crowded, there's fire hazard? Then can we, and we as a city, close off the one-foot access, or do we need MidPenn to come back?
Well, my position is that the city owns this one-foot non-access strip, so it's still under our control even after, even if the council adopts this resolution. Yes. Players always talk too much, I guess.
We talk just enough, I think, we're fine.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question. Has there been an increase in fires and smoking in reports recently?
Okay. All right. So I'm going to call for a motion and then see if anyone else makes any comments on this. And I will just note also, before we do that, just, this is obviously just one step. So I understand from a process standpoint, there is concern about a rush to this, but this doesn't open the gate. This, this means that this still is a process through MidPenn, that, you know, concerns can be heard and continue to work, work through hearing from the neighbors as well. So I just want to make sure that people are clear of what the potential decision is tonight. So, okay, with that, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2023 dash?
117.
117, a resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, finding that hiking and pedestrian use of the one-foot-wide non-access strip and located easement at the end of Los Vientos Way dedicated to and accepted by the city of San Carlos is consistent with the public use granted.
Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I have a quick comment.
Okay, go ahead, councilmember.
I would just encourage our staff to reach out to the, to the residents. I'm not sure why. I hear their concerns that they got noticed, kind of, I don't know what happened with the mail, or, you know, it would have been nice if they had more time to comment. It seems kind of like they had to rush through getting their neighborhood organized to come out here. And so I would hope, as, as the mayor said, that we can continue those conversations, maybe set up a meeting with the police chief with the neighbors and hear the concerns and work to address some of them as these conversations go on with MidPenn. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate Sarah's comments just now. I think connecting the neighborhood to our, our chief and seeing if there are any specific concerns that, that can be addressed, that'd be great. You know, I, public access to our parks has always been a, a high priority for this council, so I'm, I, I believe I will support this. But I will just say that if this is a problem, if we, you know, these concerns are realized and this isn't working, we can just as quickly decide to close it again. I'm glad to hear that, and, you know, I'm committed to reviewing this if needed in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everybody that spoke. But you know, there's lots of trails in San Carlos and other peninsula cities that allow public access near people's homes. Even though I've heard several comments tonight, I'm not sure how this area is all that different or all that unique. These are public lands, and public lands need to have public access. Otherwise, why do we have them if we can only control access at a few points? I'd also argue that increased public access could actually discourage illegal activity around homes. Those that engage in criminal activity prefer less-traveled areas. It's also important to remember that a council adoption of this resolution does not guarantee that MidPenn will open the gate. It's really an advisory vote, and the ultimate decision will be that of MidPeninsula. And as the vice mayor said, if there's problems with the point of access that reveal themselves to be different than other areas with similar characteristics, we'll address them. But I don't think we ought to preemptively permit access because we think there will be problems. And I realize that there have been some, but I go back to my prior comment. Finally, public meetings that address these issues in these kinds of meetings, it's been my experience that those that don't want something are usually the ones that show up and not those that do. We did have a couple in favor tonight, but we've also received quite a few letters of support for the access in this area, so I'm going to be voting in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Collins. I will also be supporting this. I, I think that access to open space is critical for us moving forward. Again, you know, this is a step in, in that area. It is something that, you know, certainly we've prioritized as a council, and I feel strongly about, as someone who uses a lot of the open space trails. And we do have access in other spots. I know the one was mentioned on Loma, but there's also on Tremonte, which is a dead-end street as well, where there's access to Eaton Park. So we do have, you know, to me, I want to increase access to open space wherever we can, and I'm open to, you know, trying to work with the residents up there to hear their concerns and work with them as it moves forward. So with that, Crystal, can you call the roll?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Rack?
Yes. Okay, motion passes 5-0. All right, we're now moving on to item All right, we're now moving on to item 10B. Okay, let me see if I can find my. 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution setting a public hearing for November 13, 2023, to consider a four-year rate plan for residential and commercial solid waste rates, including unscheduled services pursuant to Proposition 218. Stephen Machida.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I have a presentation on solid waste rates. Krista, thank you, Krista. So do the late in this hour, try to be very brief. Do I have control? Okay. So basically, what we're asking the council to do tonight is to receive this presentation for the solid waste rates, and then select a rate scenario that we could actually look forward to implement for residential and commercial solid waste accounts. What we're also asking council is to adopt the resolution setting of public hearing of November 13, 2023, to consider a four-year rate plan for the residential and commercial solid waste accounts. And then instruct city staff to mail the Proposition 218 letters to inform the public of the city council will consider the rate increases at the, at this public hearing. Very quickly, the background, last time the city council actually considered a solid waste rate was mid-2021. The rates that were set at that time were six percent for each year, effective from, again, 2021 through 2023. Historically, the city council has really adopted smaller nominal increases, and really, this is to keep the rates aligned with the cost of providing services while minimizing the annual impacts to ratepayers. Basically, this model that the council has used really has served the city very, very well. Basically, we're one of the few cities in SB member agencies that actually have a rather large reserve, basically, and, and that really entails that, you know, we're able to cover some of the unexpected costs, and we won't have these wild, really wild swings. However, in 2024, there's some new costs that were coming along and kind of outlined in your staff report, but basically the titles are, we're seeing some solid waste costs go up at Ox, or for disposal at Ox Mountain. Some of the Shoreway Environmental Center contracts actually have additional costs as well as cost increases for ecology of actually collections. The new Bay Area Air Quality Management Districts, or BACMUD, regulations have to deal with some of the greenhouse gas issues that we will still have to address, as well as some of the green waste disposal for kind of methane gas or the SB 1383 that the council is probably aware of. And then just in general, really looking at some of the cost escalations and future costs for regulatory compliance. So as a result, staff actually had Barlow Wells Associates, and with me I have tonight is Alex Handler, to conduct a study to really evaluate the need for the increase of solid waste. As I mentioned earlier, the, the rates that we have been, actually in place, have created, you know, enough reserve that we wanted to kind of still look at the rate increase and see where we are. But as I mentioned, because of the council's foresight of increasing the rate anomaly each year, we're really determined, there's really kind of two scenarios that we were, we wanted to present to you. Basically, the first scenario, or scenario A, is a four-and-a-half percent increase each year, starting in 2024 through 2027. The second scenario, scenario B, is actually to have a 0% increase for 2024 or a rate holiday during that year, and then do a rate increase of 6% each year, starting in 2025 through 2027. So this table really kind of shows you the two scenarios. So scenario A is that graduated rate, it's kind of the slow and steady increase over the four years, whereas scenario B shows the rate increase where we actually have a rate holiday of 2024, and then a 6% increase each of the following years from 2025 through 2027. If you look at the third row, where the single-family monthly charge for a 32-gallon, that's predominantly most of what we see in our community. Basically, in scenario A, you see, you know, approximately $2.20, approximately $2.20 increase over the four years. For scenario B, that's the one with the 0% rate increase. You, you maintain the same level that we have currently at 2023 level, and then you move up approximately a little over, over these 2025 to 2027, an average increase of about $3 per month over that timeframe. This chart I just put up for illustrative purposes, but basically, this is kind of in the table in your staff report. This kind of reflects what's in that table. But basically, you could see San Carlos, we're kind of in the mid-range, and this is for 2022 rates. We really don't have the 23 rate yet, as most of the other agencies are in the process of actually looking at their rates currently. However, as I mentioned earlier, San Carlos is kind of in an enviable position where we actually have quite a bit of reserve, so we'll probably maintain our position, whereas I expect some other of the member agencies will actually, some of their rates will actually need to go up a little bit higher, and so the shift, there may be a shift in, in positioning. So our recommendation is, is have council adopt scenario A, which actually includes the 4% rate increase over the, all rate classes for each year over the next four years. However, we also have given the council the option, if you in fact do wish to actually have a rate holiday in 2024, we provided scenario B, again, which will have a rate holiday of 2024, followed by a 6% increase each year in 2025 through 2027. So our recommendation is to adopt a resolution setting the public hearing for November 13 to consider a four-year rate plan for residential and commercial solid waste rates, including unscheduled services pursuant to Proposition 218. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions, and by the way, I do have Joe Lamoriana from Rethink Waste also available to answer any council's questions.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you to Joe and Alex for also staying here later. I think, I find, Stephen, I think many times your stuff always comes up at the end, and you are, you are here for the duration, so I appreciate that. We'll try to make this quick. All right, Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yeah, real quick, just thank you, Steve. Appreciate the overview and all the work that, you know, this looks easy, but there's a lot of work behind all this. I realize that. I guess my question is, you know, no one likes a rate increase, but given inflation has been so high of late, how is it we only have to increase four-and-a-half percent like that? I mean, this could have been 10%, right? I'm kind of curious, what, you know, how do we do that? That seems like good work.
Well, I mean, it's actually the good work that the city council has actually had done previously. Basically, I think you had the foresight of really looking at, kind of doing the forecast, kind of a long-range plan, and actually increasing each year subsequently, so that you, you really kind of addressed kind of the peaks and valleys, and you kind of flattened out the rates over time. In many instances, and I've worked in other cities where you, you have wild swings, where you could do a 2% increase one year and then a 14% the following year. By doing kind of a, kind of a gradual nominal increase of each year, you actually kind of smooth out that curve and actually kind of create, you know, in this case, we create a, a nice reserve where you essentially kind of work off that reserve should you have some unexpected costs that, that you don't anticipate.
But this, these increases, this isn't us working off our reserve, is it? This is a sustainable footing?
Yeah, the 4% really basis can maintain, essentially maintains reserve, and that's kind of follow, kind of the historic process that this council has followed, kind of certainly for, for some time now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
I'll make this brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, looking at the, the difference, at the end of four years, like a six-cent difference whether or not we go with A or B. So it, when I look at the numbers, they're just so close to each other, it doesn't make a lot of sense to, you know, take a rate holiday, unless I'm missing something.
You know, basically, and I think that's the reason why council, or excuse me, staff actually made the recommendation, is kind of the follow-the-practice that, you know, this council has followed, is kind of continue on the, the kind of nominal rate increase, and then that kind of assures you, number one, you're going to maintain your reserves, and it's really still address and flatten out your, your kind of charges over, over time.
So I guess there's possibly some intangibles that we're not, we haven't even considered that could come up.
There, there's always intangibles.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Venkatesh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be fast. Are we voting for A or B right now?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we need, we need directions so that we could put that, you know, that information in our 218 notices.
I would vote for option A, so that we don't take a break and we don't get sticker shock to our residents, so that's my summary.
Noted. All right. I don't have to do a public comment, but I want to ask Joe a question since she's stayed here all this time.
It's like my favorite kid. It's like my favorite child.
Where is your new office going to be?
Tonight at San Carlos.
So, Joe, I know we, we've obviously seen other cities dealing with significant rate increase. Can you give an example, or like where some other cities may be struggling, where we're sort of at four-and-a-half percent, where how that has sort of played in our favor? Is there an example you can highlight?
And first of all, hello, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. I think we just all experienced something really unacceptable earlier, so I'm still recovering. We're just starting this process right now, so I don't have specific examples. I've gone to two other rate study sessions, and like you, they both took, I think, a pretty prudent approach. When we let a large operating facility contract out into the RFP domain, and we got the responses back, we knew that there was going to be some significant adjustments in the cost basis. So we were advising our member agencies last year to start building the reserve, and you guys did it, so credit you. Yeah, but I don't have a specific right here right now.
Got it. All right, thank you, Joe. All right, Krista, do we have any public comment on this item?
There are no hands up.
Okay, let's close public comment. All right, I'll bring it back here. So we have two options. I heard Councilmember Venkatesh. Any other thoughts from other council members, or you're welcome to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-.
118.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, setting a public hearing for November 13, 2023, to consider a four-year rate plan for residential, commercial solid wastes, including unscheduled services pursuant to Proposition 218, and adopting a 4.5% annual increase for the years 2024 through 2027.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Krista, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Rack?
Yes. Okay, motion passes five zero. Thanks, everyone, for staying. We got our last item now, which is consideration, 10C, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the employment agreement with Jeff D. Malp, city manager.
Just for the record, the city manager's left.
The city manager has left the chambers.
Considering it's his contract.
All right. Rebecca Mendenhall, you have the floor.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Given the, the time of the evening, I'm going to make my comments brief tonight. So in August, on August 28, the city council conducted the city manager's performance review and instructed the city attorney to negotiate the terms for his employment agreement. So the terms of the agreement are the following. It's a fixed term from March 14, 2023, through March 13, 2026, an annual salary of $380,000, and he would be eligible for COLA increases and benefits offered to the management group. We've removed the 10% discretionary bonus provision. We've also removed the annual increase of the car allowance, it will remain fixed at $665 per month throughout the term of the agreement. We've added a provision to restrict the city council from terminating the city manager for three months following a council election. This is a similar language, it's in the city attorney contract, and we've added a provision for one-time, eight-week paid sabbatical between June and August 2025. So the total cost of the contract is $213,100, and with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Do my colleagues have any questions? Okay. Seeing any, Krista, is there any public comment?
There are no hands up.
Okay, I'm happy to take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-.
119.
119, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the employment agreement with Jeff D. Malp, city manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Krista, can you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor Rack?
Yes. All right, motion passes five zero. Before we finish, Greg, I just want to ask you one very quick question. On the item for the Los Vientos Gate, can we share with MidPenn our actions? Is there possible to send a letter or something to say, we have done this? I know it's sort of passed that item, is that something we can?
That's, that's part of our plan to do that.
Okay, to just notify them that we have taken this action?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. There's nothing on agenda setting, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting.